It stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Penn Station's just gonna get this connected in case anybody's running to him over there. I don't think he's ready.
Will Bill be on the phone? Bill, absolutely totally?
Yes, he's absolutely totally.
Oh, he is?
Welcome. This service is provided by FreeConferenceHall.com. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Access code or phone number you have dialed isn't correct. Please check your credential and try again.
Who is that, Bill?
If you are the host, press star next. Please enter your PIN followed by the pound or hash. Thank you. There is one host in this conference.
Okay, it might go really, really far. We might not have any good joint phones. Yeah. We'll give it just a few minutes and then... Okay. Police Station, can you please do roll call? Steve Jarvis?
Here.
Bill Minor? Jim Peterson?
Here.
John Johnson? Okay, we have a quorum. Let me see, just go ahead and shut it down. We're gonna start it and we've done roll call. We don't need the mood music. Okay. All right, just to remind everyone, we are recording the council meeting. So if you have any conversations that are required, you're welcome to use our vestibule. Your voices will be caught on the tape. We have a really good sound part to it, so you will be heard. Before we go into any more on the agenda, I just wanted to address the council and the audience. So at our last meeting that we had, I had some discussion relative to productivity of our meetings and ways that we can work together to be productive and move things along and get things accomplished. And I referenced utilizing Robert's Rules of Order more than we have had in the past. I believe that we have used it as a guideline but have gotten lax on some of the things that would really help us keep things moving along productive and also encourage people to be respectable of each other. So at this point, I just wanted to address some changes that you will see. So the first change, if you look at the agenda, the next item that you're gonna see that's an agendized item is conflict of interest. Typically, we don't have this put on the agenda and sometimes it just gets forgotten or overlooked. I think it's important that we visit it and as such, it will be put on the agenda as an item. I've also had Station make some copies and passed out some guidelines for public comment in common council meetings. So I've done some research relative to requirements and what Robert's Rules recognizes as appropriate protocol. I've also done some research relative to interpretations of that. And one of the things that was discussed in all of the readings that I've done is that it's good to have some guidelines that are established while you have these, when you have meetings, so the public understands their interaction and how we need to be working together. So with that being said, I'm just gonna read the bulleted points and you will notice that really the only major change that you're gonna see is I increased the time limit from two minutes to three minutes. I think two minutes is kind of rough for somebody to actually express their entire idea, so I've increased that to three minutes. So with that being said, what we're looking at as far as norms for public comment in our council meetings, they will be as follows. Public comment is provided during the recognized public comment time is included on the published agenda and is opened at mayor's direction. Public comment is also open at the mayor's direction at the appropriate time when addressing action items and discussion items. The council may invite anyone to speak at other times during the meeting as necessary. This will be led by the mayor, who will gain consensus from the council and open the floor for public comment accordingly. Speakers will need to come to the front table and state their full name and address for our records. We will address all speakers by their surnames to maintain consistency. Public comment will have a three-minute time limit. Speakers may not give their time to other people. Speakers will be timed and those exceeding the time limit will be asked to return to their seats. This is to maintain fairness for all participants. Time provided to the public is to be used to allow residents to express their views in order to inform the council. Council members as well as city staff will refrain from speaking during this portion of the meeting. The finance officer will be ready to note any input or questions that may be asked and responses will be provided at a later date. The complexity of the question will drive the timeline for the answer, but the expectation should be that an answer is received prior to the next council meeting. In the event a member of the public has an item that they would like input on, they should contact the city administrator, finance officer, or the mayor and request it be added to the agenda as a discussion item. The public is asked to use courtesy and respect when addressing their comments. Demonstrations such as booing, hissing, or clapping are not appropriate and continued behavior may result in an order to leave the meeting. So copies have been provided of this and we will make sure that they also get put on the website. Again, just some norms for us to be able to interact more productively together. The last thing that you're gonna see on the agenda that really relates to some changes are, is the addition of a section titled "Discussion Items." So I received a call from Steve Jarvis last week with some recommendations and ways that we can work together to ensure that we have smooth-running meetings and we're more productive. And one of the areas that Steve and I talked about were the report item sections. It seems that there are some times that during report items, there's conversation that occurs and it's thought that the report item section is just meant to be that, an opportunity for people to state a status or what's happening. So with that being said, I've taken all of those items that we would expect to see dialogue on, whether it be between council members or whether it be with the public and the council, and put those under discussion items. Again, anything can be discussed at a council meeting, so if the public has something that they would like addressed and would like input on, you can always contact City Hall and we'll make sure that it does get put on the agenda. The agenda cutoff is the Wednesday prior to the meeting, so just so you know when that'll occur and then when you talk to us, we'll let you know when it gets put on the agenda. Okay, so with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and ask if there are, after the council has had an opportunity to review the agenda, are there any things on the agenda in which a conflict of interest occurs? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. So the consent calendar will include the approval of 210-2020 Agenda, approval of 127-2020 Meeting Minutes, approval of claims, set hearing for February 24, 2020, 316 Forest Street, number Vias and Victor 2020-01, variance request, setbacks, age of mobile, Peters, Brothers, Matouche. Any conversation?
Yeah, and just one comment on the Wednesday. It's Wednesday noon.
Wednesday noon, yes.
Yeah, it just has a...
Wednesday noon. Thank you for the clarification.
I'd like to rearrange the action items and put item B as item A, or 1, if you will.
Okay.
Item C as item 2, and item A as item 3 or C.
Okay.
So move the Bull Run to first and the legal contract with the attorney, second, and then the sign ordinance, third.
Okay. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion. Alderman Peterson, Second Alderman Jarvis. Roll call, please. Jim Peterson?
Yes.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, motion carried. Before I open it up to public comment, in the spirit of time sensitivity and the importance to our community, we have the Pennington County Sheriff's Office here. I'd like to go ahead and invite them up now to give their report out. As we move forward, I'll make sure that we make that note to the agenda.
Thanks, Mayor. Hello, everybody. Hi. Did everybody get a copy of the January report and the packets? January is a fairly slow month, which is good. We only had two arrests. One was for trespassing and it resulted in a probation hold. Then we had a domestic assault arrest as well, so those were our arrests for the month of January. Had a warrant arrest, but... That's all I have.
Anything? All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
See you, Andy.
Okay. Public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak on any matter that is not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Vic Alexander. Do I get to give the address every time? A mailing address or...
No, that's my...
Okay. Question, you had mentioned that were being recorded and such. Is that also the case with Planning and Zoning Commission?
So...
Video recording as well as audio?
So I will answer that question during the mayor report out. I know that there was a question on that.
Okay.
So I will address that during the report out.
One question I have, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead with action item, rescheduled action item 7A, Bull Run Plan Unit Development, required contributions. We'll have Ms. Shade presenting.
This planned unit development is the heart of the recently approved Tax Increment Financing District Number Two. Excuse me, Number Two. The Bull Run development will consist of 40 residential lots with approximately eight to 10 of those tiny home lots. The development will extend Quinn Drive from its current dead-end cul-de-sac to connect again with Top of Hill Avenue. All the homes, regardless of size, will have permanent foundations, timber structure for exterior and interior walls, pre-engineered roof, and floor trusses. The subdivision will have a homeowners' association to manage the proposed park on Lot 15, which is in the upper northwest corner. And they will also enforce the covenants of the subdivision. The applicant anticipates construction on the project to be started in the winter of 2020. The planning department and the Planning and Zoning Commission have had multiple discussions with the developer, Jim Skoll. Details on the PUD, such as lot sizes, setbacks, and variances, have all been worked through. Hill City Municipal Code Title IX, Section 1304, Required Contributions states, "The legislative body, as part of the approval of a PUD, shall be permitted to require an applicant to make reasonable contributions to include, but not limited to any combination of the following." How does the council wish me to progress with these six points? I can go through them one by one and let you know what has been talked about already with the developer. Do you want me to go point by point? So you guys have an opportunity to discuss each point as it's stated. How did you want me to proceed?
Gentlemen, do you have any preference?
No.
I have none.
Point by point?
Okay. Number one, dedication of land for public park purposes. Lot 15 will be the dedicated park for that subdivision. Number two, dedication of land for public school purposes. Planning and zoning commission obviously did not feel that that was required for that development. Number three, dedication of land for public road right-of-way purposes. On the plat that is currently working through Planning and Zoning, Quinn Drive extension will go from the dead end on the east and then curve around and connect again to Top of Hill. Number four, construction of or addition to roads serving the proposed project when such construction or addition is reasonably related to the traffic to be generated. The TIP agreement includes Quinn Drive extension, which will include curb, gutter, sidewalks, and asphalt, Top of Hill Road improvements to grade, to the grade, curb and gutter, lighting, three-fire hydrants, and asphalt, and then the reshaping, grading, and asphalting of Bud's Drive. Number five, installation of required traffic safety devices. Per the city engineers' recommendations, the curb on the west side is a little bit sharper. It would require 15 mile-an-hour speed limit on Quinn Drive, so those signs will be provided by the developer as well as a stop sign and then two sharp curb-ahead signs, one going in each direction. Number six, preservation of areas containing significant natural, environmental, historic, archaeological, or similar resources. None of these areas have been brought forward by any outside agency review or the city engineers being an area of concern. Recommendation from the PNC Commission to the City Council recommends motion to accept the proposed required contributions for Bull Run subdivision. And our question is, does the council wish to require the applicant to make any other reasonable contribution within these six areas?
So you mentioned there's variances. What variances?
That is gonna be on the PUD list. Variances are gonna be from lot sizes, setbacks.
So as a planned development, it follows R2, the R2 zoning?
Except for the variances listed in the PUD, correct.
Pardon me?
Except for the variances requested in the PUD.
So the variances still have to come forward?
Variances are within the PUD list or application because it's more of a, it's more of a letter versus a whole marketing brochure. And that is something that the Planning and Zoning Commission has the authority to approve or disapprove.
So you're saying the Planning and Zoning, I see that it can approve a PUD?
Correct.
You're also saying they can now approve variances?
If variances are requested within the PUD, yes.
Not that, what are the, so my original question are, what are the variances?
The variances are to lot sizes for the tiny home lots. The variances are for front setbacks, rear setbacks, side setbacks, and there's four variances for the allowance of tiny homes, so variances on the 2006 IBC codes.
So setbacks and size of homes?
Not size of, well, no, not size of homes. Not size of homes, variances, lot sizes.
Lot sizes, okay.
I don't have the list in front of me because this wasn't something that was gonna be discussed at tonight's meeting with the council.
You're asking us to vote on this PUD?
No, asking you to vote on the six...
Items relating to the PUD.
Six of the required contributions.
And it's your determination that variances then don't go through the public review process that they normally do?
That is correct. They're in, within the PUD.
Okay, I'm not sure, but, okay.
So those variances are available for public consumption and if I'm not mistaken, they were included in the last PNC packet?
That is correct.
Okay.
We've been discussing on the last couple of PNC.
Mm-hmm, relative to the PUD.
So, you know, as it says here, it's overlay on, basically, on the R2, and a variance typically goes through a process. And anyway, I don't have any issues with the items that are being varied, but I'm more into the, what the process is. So we just circumvented the variance, public input on that, and again, I personally don't have any issues with it, but I don't know if I agree with that.
So did you validate that process?
We had a hearing at the PNC level at the last meeting where all of those were gone through.
Was there input on the process itself, though, from other resources?
It was following our Hill City Municipal Code, so under the PUD section of Hill City Municipal Code. So I don't have my code book, but I could go grab it if you'd like. It's only a couple of pages long.
It's the only comment I have.
So then for clarification purposes, the PUD is approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council will not see that for any type of approval?
For not for any type of approval, although the list will accompany the final plat to City Council.
So I don't have any more, out of these six items, I don't have any more concerns?
Okay, thank you, Danny. So at this point, I usually open it up to public comment. Jim, I don't know if there's anything that you'd like to say or anybody else in the audience?
I don't think so. No, it's, you know, we're doing, I think everybody knows we're doing substantial city improvement.
Yes.
We're doing more city improvement than our project, in fact, and that's what's necessary to improve that part of town and loop the water system, curb and gutter, and paving some streets. And, you know, we're flooring a grade on Top of Hill, so it meets criteria, so it's a nice project. I mean, it's all small lots for affordable, so it says affordable housing here in the community, which is a great shorty, so it seems to be good stuff.
Seeing no other public comment, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Gentlemen, any other discussion? If none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And your motion is to accept the six changes?
Well, the Bull Run Plan Unit Development Required Contribution, so stuff that adds is, I guess, huh?
Okay.
1 through 6.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Can we please have a roll call, vote, police station? Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
John Johnson?
Yes.
Jim Peterson?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor, motion carried. Action item 7B, approval of resolution 2020-03, Legal Service Contract, GPNA, Gunderson, Palmer, Nelson, and Ashmore. Brett?
So, based upon the information that we received from Gunderson Palmer, I put together this resolution that just frames the basic fees and services that will be provided by that law firm. And so in there, you'll see the rate, you'll see the insurance coverage for liability, and then you'll also see kind of some miscellaneous things like, you know, we're not gonna pay for some of the out-of-pocket, or we will pay for out-of-pocket that's above and beyond kind of a normal thing, but they're, what they charge us for the rate is all of the paper and the staples and the paper clips and all that supply stuff. That's normal operating expense. I put that together in the form of a resolution. State law does require either an ordinance to be in place or a resolution to be adopted. In our case, the city has an ordinance in place that's been on the books for a while that blazes out the attorney services in our ordinances. The only question that's not answered is the rate, what we're gonna pay for those services. And so that's why we would adopt the rate schedule in front of you. I had Talbot look at that. It looks fine. It's pretty basic. Nothing too complex, as you can see in front of you. And so we just need to set those error marks to finish off the legal services.
References, ordinance, what ordinance is that, Brett?
Oh, and I don't have my code book with me. It's like, I can grab it quick.
So while Brett is getting that, just from a perspective of introductions, this is Talbot Weisser. Talbot is our interim attorney contact as we continue in our relationship with Gunderson, Palmer, Nelson, and Ashmore until we do bring ourselves to a point where we make a selection on a permanent attorney. The rates that are listed in the contract that you see in the resolution that Brett has is the hourly fee that we've agreed to. We have not negotiated any per-meeting cost. That will be done when we look for our permanent legal firm that will be representing Hill City. And in addition, we have made arrangements that will allow Talbot to join our meetings to avoid any drive time telephonically. So in those cases where we do need his assistance or there are agendized items that we would like some input on or items that he feels would be beneficial to have himself here, he has also sent the packet as well as the agenda. Then we will be able to have him here telephonically. He's agreed to come up on his own to the meeting today for his own drive time and introduce himself to everyone here. So we'll talk to him in just a few minutes further on the agenda, but wanted to put the name to the face. Brett?
So the code section that I'm referring to in our municipal code is 1.04.02. And I, I won't read it, but right in the middle, it says, I can read it. "In addition to the duties prescribed by a city attorney by the state of South Dakota law, a city attorney shall represent the city in all matters of city business, prepare ordinances, notices, or other papers that are incidental to the affairs of the city, advise the city officials with respect to legal affairs of the city, to represent the city in litigation in which the city is a named party. The city attorney shall be entitled to a reasonable compensation to be fixed by the governing body." So that's right in the middle of the paragraph. That's the sentence that I keyed in on. "In case of the absence of the city attorney or her incapacity or in matters deemed by the governing body to be of great importance to the city or matters in which the city governing body deems the city attorney needs assistance, special attorney may be employed at such reasonable pay as shall be directed by them." So that middle sentence, everything in that paragraph says, here's what a city attorney will do for the city in addition to however it's described by the state law. That middle sentence essentially says, "The governing body shall set the compensation to be fixed by the governing body of what those services to be paid for, what that fee is."
So the 195 an hour, so if you're up here three hours, that's a $585 bill, most right of time?
Yeah, that'd be correct. Mayor was correct in that when we talked about this, discussed meetings. Our firm generally doesn't, won't do a set rate for a meeting simply because we've had some experiences where what you end up with is you'll be there for five hours because they don't wanna ask you every legal question they can think of because they have a set price. And I try to work as much as I can with entities to limit time. You know, I try, that's why we talked about drive time and that's why today I said, look, you know, I've been on the phone a couple of times, I haven't met any of you face-to-face. Though I swear, Mr. Johnson, we've met sometime before. I'm trying to remember when. But, you know, you wait for X law for 29 years, you run into people occasionally here and there, but the, but I want you to put a name, a face with a name. Wanted to be up here to explain how we work, how the firm works, give you some background on the firm, you know, and what our experience has been representing cities. I know you've had some experience with the firm because we do the pool work. I don't do pool work. I do small government work primarily, quite a bit of small government work and business work otherwise. The reason I'm, one of the reasons I'm sitting here is I've done Piedmont for years. I would help form Piedmont. I've represented the city of Piedmont since its inception. Represent, I've represented multiple small governmental entities, sanitary districts, water districts, road districts. I helped form and establish the last two rural water systems that were established in the hills, that's Bearview and Southern Black Hills. So I kinda have, I've done a lot of different things, whether it does with real property, utilities, and infrastructure, which tends to be a big issue for cities. When we were approached by servants interim, we said we'd do that. The 195 is the rate that we do this work at for new clients. It was a rate that we were just hired at by Box Elder. So I said we'd do it at the rate that we gave Box Elder last, last summer. We were hired to do Box Elder's work in an interim basis because their city attorney had gotten fired. And we're doing that currently at that rate. One of the other junior partners is their primary contact, but I've been working with Box Elder on infrastructure issues, such as they've got a rural development grant going on right now that, and loan that I'm very familiar with because I've done multiple of those, and helping them put together or finish up. So that's kinda where we got the rate, that's kinda the history and the meetings, because I get that a lot where people are, a group will say, well, you're here for three hours, you charge for all three hours. The answer is yes. Just because we've had bad experience, we're trying to lump someone in. And so we kinda made a policy decision across the firm that you gotta charge that by the hour. We, you will find one thing, as I shared with the mayor, I was a math and economics guy in undergrad, so I tend to try to be as much cost efficient and I tend to be, try to cut to the chase as quickly as possible. If I can see a way that you can save costs with our firm, I'll tell you. We were lucky at Gunderson Palmer that, it's always nice to have good clients like City here, but at the same time, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't need to take on the work. There's always work to be done. But we like to do this work. We do this work at a lower rate than we do for our private clients because we feel that's part of being a law firm and lawyer, is representing governmental entities, especially small governmental entities that have a lot of... small governmental entities who have a lot of person, a lot of people just trying to do the right thing to help their community be better. And we provide a lower rate than we did if somebody walked in off the door.
Same rate when you're on the phone, too, right?
Yeah, same rate when you're on the phone. And that's why I want the discussion is if you don't need me for specifics, let's, let's do it by the phone. Like I said, though, today I'm coming up, I'm going to no charge my drive time for today because I wanted everybody to look me in the eye and if they have specific questions on how I'll work, let me know.
Let's see. I hear this one, the second paragraph, it mentions the appointed position of city attorney, and this is by no means appointed. Correct?
So it's an appointed interim?
Yeah. And you need, there's certain things under the statutes that it's supposed to be the city attorney technically. So generally, you appoint the interim city attorney just for the title. Now, it's a rare case, for example, I don't know how often you do this, if you do a code enforcement in court, that's being appointed city attorney generally to do that. And so generally, you appoint, you appoint. But you're appointing until you replace in this situation.
So can we put in appointed interim physician?
Yeah.
Make sense? Would that make sense?
The resolution, I don't, use as interim city attorney, that's fine because that's the capacity. Our firm did receive-
So it's clear what it is we're doing?
Yes. Yeah. Our firm did receive the solicitation and I forwarded on to our group for discussions to whether to submit a proposal.
And so, so this is fulfilling certified law 91423 is what you're referring to, I think. So what about, so once we get to the point of appointing the city attorney and maybe perhaps is your firm or you or not, but what's the exit strategy in terms of how do we exit if it's not you?
You mean for, if you appoint like another firm or solo petition?
Is that just, it just terminates like, almost like a month-to-month deal or whatever?
Yeah, so generally, a couple of times when we've done the interim things, yeah, so when you appoint, generally what I do is talk to the incoming attorney and then, because there are times where you say it's more cost efficient for us to fix. Like, for example, in your TIF district, I've been, I've done a lot of work in different TIF districts, so I've been looking at that and talking to Toby to clean up some of that. So there's been situations where we've been sort of interim, somebody else is coming in and saying, why don't you just finish that because it would take me too long to get up to speed? So sometimes you'll get an overlap that way. But generally-
So if you're specific on what tasks are left to do?
Right, and, yeah. And, or if you're in the middle of trying a case or, you know, a case coming up, generally you try it out just because it takes so much longer time for the new guy to get up to speed.
Sure.
And, and, you know, if replaced, generally I work with, it's what new guy wants to do because he's the one that's going to have to live with you.
Those discussions haven't been had or anything yet, but or anything of that nature? So I was just curious, though.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the request, I think I just got it last Friday or something like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the request has been sent out.
So.
The RFP has been sent out.
Yeah.
And it has been sent out.
Yes. Yes, and Talbot said he's already received it, so.
This ain't the time to address my-
No, probably.
You can, yeah, I put some discussion time on there. I thought that would be appropriate for that, yeah.
That's right.
Yep.
Yeah. Sorry if I went into my speech too.
That's okay. No, that's fine. That's fine. So does the council have any other questions or anything else you'd like to ask Talbot right now relative to our engagement with him as interim counsel? Any questions?
I said I don't want.
Yeah, we just need that changed, okay.
And one clarification I'd make is why you appoint me, I will be using other attorneys in the firm at times. The one benefit, you know, one of the benefits we bring as a firm is I'm locked into some other meeting, you have an emergency, like you put somebody else on it, and then occasionally there might be somebody who has actually, has a higher specialty that I can hand it to that'll know the answer a lot quicker, so you'll see other people's initials. But we have a group of about five attorneys that regularly do municipal work.
So make a motion to approve this with that change in like two locations.
So we have a motion from Alderman Peterson, second Alderman Jarvis. Roll call vote, please, station.
Yes, changes, huh?
What changes?
I'm going to turn it.
Jim Peterson?
Yes.
Steve Jarvis?
Yes.
John Johnson? Okay, all in favor, motion carried. Action item 7C, ordinance 2019-03, amending chapter two definitions in chapter 10, sign regulations within Title IX, zoning and subdivision regulations, first reading. Ms. Shea?
The Planning and Zoning Commission submitted the proposed revised sign ordinance to the city council for the first reading on November 12, 2019. Council did not feel enough outreach was done to the business community and directed the P&amp;Z to hold two additional meetings, one during the day and one in the evening, as well as advertising in the Rapid City Journal. Public meetings were scheduled and held on November 21, 2019 at 10:00 a.m. and December 4 at 7:00 p.m. Advertising was placed for four days in the Rapid City Journal and two additional ads were placed in the Prevailor. A hard copy of the proposed changes went out via USPS to all commercial property owners within the city limits. Two email blasts went out to chamber members and business owners. The additional advertising costs were $441. At the November 21, 2019 public meeting, five members of the public attended. Two responded they were fine with the proposed changes. One had no comment as he was there strictly to drive another. One was our reporter from the Prevailor, and the other participant expressed concern of his inability to install off-premise billboard-sized signs along Walnut Avenue sometime in the future. Nothing new was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At the December 4, 2019 evening public meeting, one business owner had positive comments regarding where the commission was heading and wants to make sure that illegal and dilapidated sign code violations are enforced. Another business owner expressed desire to also regulate all feather flags regardless of ad copy or not. That same business owner was concerned about freestanding on-premise signs on his property, specifically regarding the elimination of the larger size chart. After discussion, it was determined, since that chart is based on property frontage, a larger lot such as a hotel, 200 square foot by 40 foot in height sign wouldn't necessarily be out of place. The commission directed staff to reintroduce the second chart, which is Hill City Municipal Code Figure 1008.1.2.2, and specify this chart was for on-premise signs only, also to define the term grandfathering. The commission also held another discussion on January 6, 2020 regarding the proposed yearly permit for temporary banners. The question centered on the proposed annual fee and shorter time periods for temporary signed permits. Public comments were made stating the businesses present didn't have a problem with the proposed fee of 120. They felt it was a fair price at $10 a month to advertise specials. Shorter time periods were also discussed and it was determined to leave it at the yearly permit. Grand opening and business anniversary signs were added to the exempt list with an allowable time period of two weeks. Distance between off-premise signs was also re-discussed and the distance proposed, 500, was agreed upon again. At the January 21, 2020 P&amp;Z meeting, the definition of abandoned sign was clarified and expanded upon. Planning and Zoning Commission has reviewed the sign ordinance amendment on February 3 meeting and recommends their approval to city council to submit a first reading.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and open it up to conversation or discussion with the Alderman.
I guess I think back how many years this town struggled with signs and what inspired all this to change?
Well, there was a councilperson that had disagreed with a signed permit and wanted a little bit more of a deeper dive in some areas. When the city attorney reviewed that, there was another area or two that he recommended changes in, and the commission determined, hey, we're making changes in three different places, let's take a look at this.
I just wonder because it seemed like as, you know that, let's say, struggle with signs forever in this town over the years. I'm sure Dick knows, you're probably on some of the boards, weren't you?
25 years or probably.
I just wondered why, so, I'm not raising hell.
When, if I could just jump in here. So, you know, the current set of rules that we operate under were adopted in 2013 to take effect January 1, 2014. So we've been under those regulations, what, five, six years now? But back when we had that discussion of that revision, there was a lot of discussion of saying, look, we need, we need to adopt this code. It's not perfect. There's some, there's some spots that needed to be tweaked, that needed to be gone over again in order to get where they needed to be. You know, some of those, and I think Alderman Peterson can agree with this, is that in some of those sections, we bogged down quite a bit because there was just, there wasn't really a clear solution of getting some traction on something. And so the conversation was, say, look, we'll agree to disagree that that one can't really be resolved today, but rather than keep the whole rest of the code held back from being adopted, we'll move forward and then come back and take a look at those rough spots of the code at a later date. And so here we are, five, six years later, looking at what I consider the rough spots. One of the rough spots, my own personal rough spot, was how we were going to do temporary signs. How long would they be in force? How long could a business have them? What was the cost of that? And that's something that took up quite a bit of time for the Planning and Zoning Commission to come up with a viable solution to it. So to me, I view it as a continuation of that effort of 2014, just to kind of smooth out those rough edges that we already knew existed in the past. And so I think it's just a natural evolution that the code will always evolve in a certain way, so.
I guess since it affects the business owners most, I guess I'd hope for more turnout in your meetings, you know, people.
They seem to be fine with it. I think, you know, the individuals that had an overly positive comment showed up. The ones that were going to be personally, that they felt negatively affected showed up. The rest seemed to just, you know, go with the flow. They were, there's really not a lot of changes in terms of restrictions in there in the code revision. And I think, too, the planning, I'd like to read something from the planning, American Planning Association, and I think this is where some of the planning and zoning commissioners feel that this was good to do a deep dive in. This is from American Planning Association. One of their directors, who's also an attorney and a land use planner, says, "Almost nothing will destroy the distinctive character of a community faster than uncontrolled signs and billboards. Sign control plays an important role in improving the appearance of small towns and traditional commercial areas, particularly as part of an overall community revitalization process. The signs along the city streets influence the public's perception of individual businesses, commercial districts, and the community as a whole. Well-designed, appropriately scaled signs can enhance a community's unique image while an overabundance of haphazardly placed, oversized, look-alike signs detracts from the community's appearance and ultimately hurts businesses. Today, one skeptical businesses are flourishing in," and there's a list of cities, I won't read them, "and in hundreds of other communities with strong sign controls." So I think the Planning and Zoning Commission's intent as well is to improve our town so that it does attract tourists and it also is pleasant for their residents to live in as well.
I have a question. Of course, there's maintenance, repair, and removal. Who determines that the sign has deteriorated by 50% as far as moving?
In our original code, it's the, it's the code enforcer, but there was a change that was requested and it was included in there. So it's, or when any signs ad copy has deteriorated by 50% as determined by the code official and affirmed by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
How does the code enforce, code official determine it's deteriorated 50%?
The photographs, and when you look at the sign, if you could read half of what's there, to me, that would be 50% deterioration.
And when were all these photos started being, I mean, if the sign is five, six years old, was there a photo taken five or six years ago of this sign?
Not following you.
You said it's all, the 50% would be determined by photos?
Correct.
Okay, so say the sign was put out five, six years ago.
Okay.
Was there a picture took five or six years ago of this original sign?
We assume that the sign coming in would be brand new. It's an assumption that when somebody gets a signed permit, it's a brand new sign.
But I guess was a picture took then of that sign five or six years ago?
Generally, we do not require that in a signed permit application.
So then how do you determine that it's deteriorated 50%?
If I look at the sign and it's, and it's completely, you know, 50% faded or 50% in, you know, where you can't read what it says, or you can't, you look at it and you can't tell what exactly it's advertising, to me, that would be a sign that would be suspect. I would take a photograph of it, numerous photographs of it, and then bring it in the new proposed, bring it into P&amp;Z and let them make that determination.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I have a legal, I'm going to ask Talbot real quick here. Just stay lying right here. I'll let you read it after I, please. Include it like this.
Within not more than 10 days, 45 days, if you're seen?
Shouldn't that, for clarity's sake, be the same there when it's referenced? I know it's probably a little redundant, but I don't know that redundancy is a bad thing. The only other question I have, and one comment, I guess, was that uncontrolled sign, we don't have an uncontrolled sign area. We have a sign ordinance, so we're not uncontrolled. We already have an ordinance for signs. With regards, you can always try to improve on stuff, but to say that we're uncontrolled, that doesn't seem-
I didn't say specifically Hill City. I was just reading an article.
So that comment of uncontrolled, I mean, we're not an uncontrolled area. We've been controlled for a long time. The transition sign district, I don't know why we're changing that. You know, the projection hanging signs, obviously that goes back to the genesis of what you're claiming would led to all this. And that is, I don't have any issues with that. I just, yeah, three, what, three meetings ago, I talked about how our revenues are taking in. I just see us heading down past that we're just tightening up in areas. I don't know that I have a huge amount of issue with this other than, so that transition may be redundant or-
Yeah, so, yeah, no, I think it's a clarification. So what he's looking at is in 1004.7, maintenance repair. If, what I would say, the last sentence that begins, which is the third from the last line about three quarters, but it overstarts if within 10 days. The point is, if you look at the previous sentence, it says not that you have 10 days or 45 days essentially in case of deteriorated copy. So his question is if within 10 days, the order is not complied with, should so, it should have again the per end or 45 days in case we deteriorate a copy of the sign.
Okay.
You could argue that it's redundant.
Yeah, it's clarifying.
It clarifies it.
Because otherwise, you're going to get an argument, does that mean 10 days after the 10 days pass or 10 days after the 45 days pass? And I think that would clarify if the intent was, if 10 days pass, then we can act, or 45 days pass, we can act.
And that, and that second sentence provides the clarity on what, what can be done, right?
Yeah.
Just copy that same 10 days, 45 into the other, where it says 10 days, 45.
Perfect.
Around 45 days in case of-
Yep. I think that would answer that. I mean, that would prevent any ambiguity.
Okay. Any other discussion before I open it up to the public?
Feather flags. It says three per property.
Correct.
Will you, what do you determine would be a property? Is it, say if you had three businesses on one building, but then were broken up into three businesses, is that considered one property?
Where are you specifically at?
Let's see here, where it says, "Feather flags."
Per property.
Yep.
The commission dictated that that was per property. Yep. Just generally because of the height, the waving motion, the distraction, they felt if somebody wanted to use their temporary sign permit, because three average feather flags equal about that 32 square foot of what your temporary banner would be, that they would space them on their property, and so, they did select that it would be property and not business.
It's kind of unfair to the business, isn't it?
Well, a lot of the businesses, a lot of the businesses that are on one property that have multiple businesses, there's no place to put those feather flags in the ground. So, it was kind of, I mean, like Main Street, you really couldn't put three feather flags per business. And if we did it at a place such as Vex, we'd have three feather flags here, and then we'd have another 25 feet, we'd have three feather flags here, then three feather flags here. It just, the commission felt that it would look very cluttered in that particular situation. So, that's why they decided to keep it with property versus business.
But if there's like four businesses, and this business over here wants to put some flags up, and this one over here wants to put some up, you know, it's kind of like, who has the right to put those up?
Whoever gets to the sign permit first.
If nothing else, then I'll go ahead and open it up to the public. Thank you, Dana. So, I'll go ahead and open it up to any public input. If anybody would like to comment on this, or discuss this in more detail, please come up to the front and let us know your name.
Janet from the Hill City Chamber. I just would like to add on to something that we had in our Morrison Schiller and State Department of Tourism presentation today that relates to what Danny just said about the uniformity of the look of a community. After, I think this was after the presentation, we were talking, or maybe Mike said it during the presentation from South Dakota Tourism, and he is the marketing director. And what he said was, "Hill City has something that no other community has. We have a certain look, we have a certain vibe, we have certain businesses." And he said, "A lot of other communities in our state are envious of that." So, I think it just bears, just pointing out that we have a great look to our community, and I think that one of the things that makes Hill City so attractive to our visitors and to our community, to all of us here, is the look of our brand-new sidewalk now, our sidewalk improvements, our flowers during the summer, beautiful businesses, people who have pride in place. So, I just wanted to make that statement, that South Dakota Tourism recognizes what Hill City has to offer, and why that is such a unique asset that we have in promoting our community for the future, for guests coming in, and for our residents.
So, with that said, we've had a sign, so that's, they've noticed that over the years, and we've had a sign ordinance in place. So, they've noticed what our sign ordinance right now seems to be doing.
You know, I don't know that they've mentioned, that they specifically noticed that.
They didn't dial it down to that.
No, no.
Your comment is, is people are envious of Hill City and the way it looks now, with a particular sign ordinance that's in place right now.
I don't, I don't know, I see what you're saying.
I mean, in that effect is, is that we have signs that are with a sign ordinance that's in play right now, and we have a look that people are envious of.
I was, I think I was, that's a great comment, Jim. I think I was probably more.
But you don't agree with it.
No. And what I'm saying is, I think that people, the state just recognized that we have a beautiful look to our community, and that uniformity of that beautiful look. And that was my only comment. I really wasn't so much drilling down on.
I appreciate your comment, but I was adding to it that we've had a sign ordinance, we're not uncontrolled signs, we've had a sign ordinance in play. Can it be better? Yeah. But I, you know, do we get, anyway, so I appreciate your comment.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate your, thank you for letting me come and say that.
Absolutely. So, in seeing no additional public comment, I'll go ahead and close. If you'd ever like to comment, please identify yourself again. Thank you.
Vic Alexander. On the transition sign district here, I am opposed to that, obviously, it's, I'm the only property that is affected by that, or that basically, that length of street that I own most of the properties on. But I'd look at that as the opportunity that I have the right to change the zoning and put a sign there. I don't have any reason to have any signs there right now. I have the right to be able to change the zoning and put signs there, and I look at that as a right. Because I don't have any there right now, doesn't mean that I won't have that need in the future. And I hate to, you know, stand by without making the comments that I think that I, I feel like it's being given away. My rights are being taken away by the way that the ordinance has been, is being changed. Any comment to that, or any questions on that? Does anybody know what I'm referring to?
So, you're saying if this was to go down a path, you would make changes to your properties now?
Well, I guess that, right now, they're zoned, and I think that's R2, and not to get too far off into the weeds here, I just think that we didn't get a chance to talk as Dale happened to be here. Yeah. We didn't get a chance to talk about that at our last meeting, and I talked at the end of the meeting, and I thought it would come up again, and it didn't ever come up again before, all of a sudden, boom, it's on the agenda there. I talked to Dale about that during the meeting, when we went through those last five deals. Is that, is what's in the book here for Danny, is, I mean, in this agenda here, is this the actual reading? Will we be reading it shortly?
This is the first reading. Correct.
Not what you read, though?
No.
What is here is the first reading. If it's missing parts, then they don't, they aren't going to be on the.
Shouldn't be missing a part.
Okay, well, I didn't think so, but it is. But back to the transition thing, I guess that I feel like, I've kind of, the Planning and Zoning Commission allowed a variance on a sign directly across the street, just across the street from that property, allowed a variance to increase the size of a sign and redo a sign. And then now, on that same stretch of property on the other side of the street where I'm at, is going to preclude me from having off-premise signs there. So, I just, I kind of think that's kind of unfair. It was just a couple of months ago, wasn't it Dale? Just a couple of months ago, we increased the size of that sign, and I'm all for it. And I hate to bring attention to that sign, because I'm afraid, I'm always afraid on what some, what the government's going to do, you know, but I still think that increasing the size of that sign across the street, and then turning around and deciding to get rid of them on the other side of the street, isn't consistent.
Can I address this, ma'am?
Yes.
This question? There was no variance on the other side of the street. He's just got a new sign permit for a little bit larger than what he currently had, and it was well within the size allowed.
It was larger than the one that was there? I thought it was a variance.
Correct, but it was, no.
Okay.
It was strictly a sign permit. And I'd like to address the Walnut Avenue side. There are seven, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, seven parcels. You own three of those. Two of them are zoned R2 and are already prohibited in our current code, off-premise signs. The third one is a business in Zone C1. It contains a freestanding sign that advertises the business that is currently being conducted on that property. So, because it already has a freestanding on-premise sign in our current code, you cannot have an off-premise sign. So, there's really nothing being taken away.
Is that the bicycle one?
Yeah.
So, but the other end, on the Cornellis and one, there could be one put there? With the change of zoning?
That's an R2 zone.
With the change of zoning, there could be a sign put there. Well, it's the same process.
There's nothing that's being taken away?
I could change the zone, you can put a sign there, and then I can also put an on-premise sign there, even though I have an off-premise sign there first.
It'd be both rezoning process.
All right. Yep, okay. Anything else, Mr. Altman?
No, I guess not.
Okay, thank you.
Part of it's not there, understand that somebody needs to get some attention to that.
Dale, Householder, Planning and Zoning Commission. Steve, I see a concern on the feather flags. What we, why we went to the three-per-property is basically, if you look, for instance, Old World Plaza may have, what, five businesses? That could be 15 signs in a 50-foot area, or flags. It's just cluttering up. Another issue is, Dick is talking about someday making that whole area one property, all right? There are variances then that can be had for that. So, if he has five businesses on one property stretched out over a block, then there's no reason he couldn't, or the owner of the business couldn't apply for a variance to cover that. But our idea was, we didn't want the downtown or transition zone cluttered with all these feather flags waving in the wind all the time. So, if we limit it to three-per-property, hopefully, that will keep the clutter down and not, but if you put three for every business in Old World Plaza in a 50-foot place, you're going to have solid flags.
But, you know, maybe, maybe three is too many. I mean, maybe one.
For business or something.
Yeah, per business.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
You know, we're trying to do it for encompassing the whole Hill City, not for any one person, any one business. What is best for the entire look of the city? That, I mean, it's not, there isn't a real right, wrong answer. There isn't, you know, something, we did the very best we could in a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion.
I know you guys have really put a lot of time into this.
More than we have in a lot of ordinance revisions. And we just feel that we came up with what was best for the entire city of Hill City. So, thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Householder. So, if I could ask a question of Ms. Shade. So, the transition sign district has been brought up a couple of times, and when I'm looking at this, am I missing it? Is there some specific place that I need to look at that references that transition sign district?
It should be the last page of the ordinance, 201903, Transition Sign District. It's right above the dated this day of.
108, that 3, or.
Okay, the table. Gotcha. And then to Walnut Avenue East Street to McGregor Street.
So, please.
And I think because of. Right along the bypass.
Not over here.
Just that little piece right there. Yep.
And it's because of the traffic that comes from the train in the summer, and it just kind of created that uniformness moving forward on Main Street.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. Anything else? Okay, so, the opportunity that we have here is, with a first reading, do we usually get a vote, Brett, an approval of the first reading? Okay.
Yeah, with, it's an ordinance, you're changing an ordinance. And so, you need a first reading, approval, then it'll be at the next meeting for a second approval, and so, you've got to vote on it.
So, for purposes of the first reading, the possibilities that are on the table are to have an approval as it sits as is, an approval making any changes that the council would see fit, or anything that you'd like to discuss further. And those are the two that I would see available from an affirmative perspective on this. So, I'll look to the council for direction.
I know we're short one council member tonight, and I think there was a couple of things that he was kind of concerned in this also. I know this has been drug up quite a bit, but I would really feel comfortable myself maybe tabling this for tonight and wait until we can have all four aldermen here, and let Mr. Minor be present and ask any questions that he might like to ask. You know, again, I hate to keep prolonging this, but I would feel a whole lot more, I feel better if we could do that.
Well, since it's an ordinance, I agree with you, but would you be willing to talk about, I mean, could I ask a question? If you guys, could you, would you, if we were to vote on this right now, would you vote for it?
I would.
I'm going to answer that as well.
I mean, I would feel more comfortable waiting to vote on this until we could have input from all of the aldermen.
Okay. Well, I'll answer for myself, and the, so that the P&amp;Z at least can have this, from at least my perspective, that the one thing that I brought up, I don't think is any heartburn, that 10-day thing, 45, I don't think that's any heartburn with anybody. If the transition sign district's in there, I can't vote for it. And the feather flag thing seems to be heartburn, and I think we maybe can look at that, but the rest of it, you know. Is it necessary? Okay. You know, cleaning up some definitions, the projection hanging signs, which was stated to be the genesis of this, and I was the alderman that questioned the process on that, and I still, today, and I think it was, is, that it was incorrectly done, and that there was a method, a path to, for that particular sign, and it was called the variance. But, you know, cleaning up that language as far as projection and hanging and making them same, it turns out that the language stays the same, which I don't think there's, I think it's clear to me anyway. But if I were to vote on this today, it would be a no, and for those reasons.
Well, and I think, I'm not sure if this is still a concern or not, but there was at one time a concern about the fee for the, let's see here, where is it at?
For the temporary signs?
Yeah, temporary signs.
Yep.
You know, charging $120 a year when there's a lot of these businesses are not open 12 months out of the year. You know, maybe make it where if a business that's open 12 months out of the year wants to pay the $120, that's fine. If there was a business open six months out of the year, they could have a reduced price for temporary signs.
Is that, is that in this?
No, no, the, so, it's the, Danny actually has it summarized as far as the conversation with regard to the people that were there. It's the second to the last paragraph.
It's not in this ordinance.
Let me see where the cost.
The specific fee would be set by resolution.
Okay, so, the fee would be set by resolution.
So, that's a different, that's another topic?
Different document.
A different topic?
Yep.
Or a different time?
Yep.
So, those particular, really, two things for me, the feather flag things, you guys, I mean, I don't know, I'll have to look at that some more, but I do think Dale should be able to weigh in on it, and if that, those items, I would be able to support. Beyond that, you know, I.
And, you know, there are some things, such as like these air puppets. I mean, would, could they be used downtown, though? But could they use, be, could they be used outside of the central district? Probably, you know, just like these feather flags could, so.
If I recall the conversation correctly, if I could just add to that for clarification for you, the discussion on those air puppets was really that around the aesthetics, as like Janet had indicated. They're not really in keeping with the look and feel of Hill City. So, when those were discussed, and I attended probably, maybe not every meeting, but a lot of the meetings on the signage, and those with the public as well, and the overwhelming thought on the air puppets was, they really just don't have a place in Hill City. We're only a few miles either end when you look at us highway-wise, and you step right out into the county, so the county has different restrictions. But as far as the city itself, the overall thought from all of the people who participated in it, in addition to whatever came from the Planning and Zoning Commission, was they really didn't see that they had a place in Hill City. So, that's just the feedback that was received, that I was there for. Okay, so, I had heard a desire to table this. So, is that a formal motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion from Alderman Jarvis to table until the full set of aldermen can participate. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, Alderman Johnson, roll call vote, please station. John Johnson. Steve Jarvis. Jim Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, so, for housekeeping now, Brett, if I can just clarify, so. Okay, so for housekeeping now, Brett, if I can just clarify, so since it was tabled, when we see it on the agenda, it'll get, again, it will be considered a first reading?
Correct.
Okay, okay. All right, that closes out our action items, and I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to discussion items. We've already heard from the Pennington County Sheriff Department, so the Hill City Chamber. Janet, please.
Good evening, everyone. Janet Wachobick Beely from the chamber, and thank you for the energy that you've all put forth in listening this far, thus far, and thank you for the energy that you are giving me tonight. There's always so much to cover, and I hope you had a chance to look over the report. I'll hit a few high points for you and give you some additional things as well. I think two things kind of came to me as I was sitting here listening tonight that kind of summarized what it is that the chamber is involved with, that, of the moment. Synergy and really awesome collaboration. The synergy of all of the tactics that the chamber uses to market and to promote Hill City, that yields so many good things, and the collaboration that we have with all of our community partners, from our marketing partners to our residents, to our businesses, to our merchants, Main Street merchants. And the, and what I was thinking of specifically was the Polar Bear Chili Cook-Off, the Tour to Chocolate event this weekend. We talked about this in our board meeting just prior to our presentation. And when you look at Hill City, how, how fabulous it looked on Saturday. Great weather, packed with school events, packed with people, people that heard about the event, people who did not, who just happened to be coming through, people who came to Hill City for one reason or another. But it was an awesome, awesome day, awesome weekend, and we hope that our businesses all had really great success, and all of the guests and residents and our visitors have fun. As far as report, you can see executive summary that we're still involved heavily in planning and management, working on planning for our season ahead, hoping for better weather this year, counting on it. I do wanna move you over to the second page on the backside of that report, where under the top performing organic posts under Facebook. One of the things we talked about today was that the, and we're grateful to Mayor Kathy for coming to, to watch that and observe that, to our board members and to our friends in the audience who were able to attend. One of the things that we have watched consistently was, is the, the growth of our key performance indicators in our media tactics. And I will tell you that one of the things, as you already know, that are important in our social media are, is our video, or video posts that our members produce and share out, that, that there's a lot of positive energy going with those. We put out our video that was produced for Hill City on January twenty-eighth, and when I shared this with South Dakota Tourism today, they were pretty impressed. There were ten thousand impressions, there was a link to our guide, and to our website. Visit hillcityesd.com. You can see the engagements and the clicks, the engagement and the movement with, with that particular post. Now, another one I wanna tell you about is down below, and these were organic posts, these were things that I did, not Lawrence and Shiller. Down below, you will also see one that we created for our billboard. You may recall that in January, we also put out a post with pictures about our billboard south of town. This was of particular interest to them as well. They said, when they saw the word billboard, they wondered, South Dakota Tourism said, what, you know, what was this about? And I said, it was a picture of our new billboard. And he, they said, look at the impressions, look at the engagement, seven hundred and twenty versus the forty-two, or let's see, three hundred and fifty with our, with our video. So they, they just thought that was pretty impressive, so I was pretty happy at their response with that. And down below, if you look at our analytics, and I, I will be, I'll be the first to admit, I'm not as well-versed as many people are on Google Analytics, but what I can see and show you and point to are the numbers. If you compare January of nineteen with January of twenty, you can definitely see that, that the numbers are going up, both in terms of users, up to nine hundred and ninety-three from the six hundred and ninety-two, new users, the number of times that they were on the website in our sessions, the pages that they looked at per session, three, three forty-two, almost three and a half pages more this time around than in January of last year, and the number of page views, they were doubled. Two thousand page views in January of nineteen, looking to forty-one-hundred, almost forty-two-hundred in January of twenty. So that is really exciting news, and I'm very, very pleased at that, just, just even that, that particular observation. Another tidbit to look at, if you look at where people are going on our website, and this is again, a result of our marketing tactics over, that we've really built on, but really concentrated in, on in the last year. If you look down below where I've shown you the August, September, October, November, December, January landing pages where people go, you can see where the consistent places are that they go on our web, on our website. But you will see that the most important thing that, that we concentrated on this last year was the stay aspect. And we saw that there were, in that time period, in January, our new users were up, where they were looking to, for places to stay, cabins, lodges, and resorts. How long were they spending there? Three and a half minutes. That's pretty doggone good. Sites and attractions, two and a half minutes. They were looking for things and places to go to eat and drink. One and a half minutes, stay again in hotels, and shop. But you can see all those categories, and I put those on there just so we have a, an idea of where people are looking when they visit our website. You've also got the list inside of you on that very next page of what we're looking at and where we are presently concentrating our efforts right now. You also will see upcoming February meetings or happenings to note. Very pleased with all the collaboration of all of our, and engagement of all of our businesses and merchants for our January and February events. Upcoming now, we've got Black Hills Film Festival. On Thursday night, we've got our Chamber mixer, I wanna make sure that you all know about that, that's over at Twisted Pine Winery in Langston Mystic Photo. Also for your, for you to know, Meals on Wheels, community endeavor. We're, we are simply a facilitator and a catalyst here at the chamber on these things for our community. So Meals on Wheels, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting. Hill City has stepped forward to be a partner, a cafe dining site, so we're going to have a ribbon cutting on the seventeenth, next Monday, eleven o'clock, and that will be followed by a, a meal to, to welcome all those who are part of that program, seniors sixteen and above, who wish to come and participate, and you are cordially invited to come and be a part of that as well. If you, if you flip over on the BIC numbers, you can, the, this document right here, you'll also see that our numbers are up a little bit over last year at this time, January. Our web requests are what we're keeping an eye on and calls that are coming in, so we're pleased with that growth as well. Another thing that is very exciting that I wanna report to you that came in this evening before I came, I checked back with our friends at Vector Printing. This is, I've been after a copier or copy company or print center to come to Hill City, and I'm very pleased to report that, having worked just within the last couple of weeks and prior, for about a year now, with our friends at Vector Printing in Custer, they're going to establish a beachhead area in Hill City. So they're going to go into the location where First Impression Salon was, into that bay, so that's really exciting news. They hope to be operational by April, they will still maintain their primary base in Custer. Also of note, we applied for a grant for a music event here at the BIC, the Visitor Information Center, we're pretty excited about, in August. Again, capturing our families, giving them a place to be and spend a nice Sunday afternoon or Saturday afternoon in the park. We want to encourage them then to, and partner up, we'll partner up with our businesses downtown, so that people can stroll downtown after that afternoon event and enjoy a nice dinner and shopping there. That again, will be the first of, of August. Another thing that I, that, things happen after I write the report, buses. We have bus reports coming in already from Diamond Bus Tours, so that again brings up the notion of our, our beautiful city having capacity to be able to serve those guests when they come. I think we have, at this time, I think there's either six or nine, I believe it's six coming in May, that we know of, and those are just the ones we know about. So there will be more. And that's, that's pretty much in it in a nutshell. The synergy again, there's going to be a huge track meet, I don't know if it's, if it's a regional track meet, I don't know if it's next weekend or the following weekend, but we're gonna advise all of our businesses so that they're aware of that, to expect increased capacity for serving visitors, families. A lot of nice people came and shopped who were here over this past weekend, so that's, that's pretty much what I wanted to share with you, and I, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Can you think of anything that you'd, and any, like, like to ask?
Thank you, you always give a great report.
Well, thank you. That's my job, and I'm privileged to be able to do it.
So Janet, I wanted to thank you for all your efforts. I have been speaking with the business owners on Main Street, and they are seeing a really good January and February start for those that are opening. So a lot of that has to be attributed to the advertising money and the business owners working together. The other thing that I just wanted to mention is when the merchants had their chili cook-off, so it wasn't the last one, there's a lot of folks that are getting out there and utilizing Facebook.
Yes.
I see funny glasses with faces on them, and I also saw some throw-down competitions, which is, it's, it's nice to see the camaraderie among the businesses as well.
We know that.
It really kind of attracts people and makes them wanna see what was going on, and a couple of the business owners, I told me, how people were coming and going, I gotta try this, or I gotta try that, 'cause I saw it on Facebook. So thank you for helping to grow that part of it as well.
No, I, I, they're the, they're the ones who made it happen. So thank you, Lorraine, and everyone who's here that is participating in the, in those kinds of events. That's what makes it happen.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, and the next item that I had was introduction of Mr. Weisorick, so I think we've gone through some of the informational aspects, just if I can add a little bit onto some of the things that Talbot has already highlighted for us. One of the reasons why his firm was attractive in a situation where we needed interim help is because of the fact that they do have such a wide base or stable of attorneys, I'll call it, for lack of a better word. They have the experience, so I was pleased to learn that Talbot's working on two other tips. So for me, that means productivity. We've, we've got folks that are familiar with this, who have contacts that are available and familiar, familiar with it, and when it comes to researching time, that ends a lot, that adds a lot to it. It cuts down on researching time and you have practical experience. So those were a lot of things that went into the conversation when we discussed the firm representing us. So with that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to the council if you have any questions. He's your captive audience right now.
Is this one I get?
Go ahead, you can ask your question.
I guess one of the questions I had, and it seems like something had changed. Like tonight, there was only three of us here. If any of us had voted no on any action item, claims or whatever, would it have passed?
Generally, yes. The, somebody just handed me something, so, the, there are some restrictions on some statutory, certain things you can vote for that, that, so you gotta have a majority there, you gotta have a quorum, and there is a, there is a confusing issue out there for Class II municipalities right now, because the legislature did a kind of rewrite of the statute. So there's a statute that talks about passing, I think that's probably what somebody just handed me here.
Well, the municipal league.
That's a brand-new one, yeah, that's the brand-new one. Because the municipal league actually, and their, their reference is still deciding to do the old one, but.
The municipal league says the majority of the elected body.
Yeah, but that is, that's, yeah, if you look at what the municipal league, because there, I was copied on an email where there's a citation back to municipal league, and I can't even remember who that.
101, Council Media's 101.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the statute the municipal league is citing is a statute, the old statute. So, and that's a, so there's a question, you know, in all frankness, there's a question. Legislature, a couple of years ago, changed nine-eight-ten, and nine-eight-eleven, and nine-eight-nine, and the whole, the whole slew of changes on there. And if you look, and so if you look at what the municipal league's citing, I think, well, I guess, if this isn't as much questions, I guess this is becoming a discussion on. So under the old law, I'll talk about the old law first, 'cause it's pretty clear under the old law, that there are certain situations that would take a majority of the elected aldermen. But in, there were another, a raft of other situations, or the majority of situations, where it would not take a, a majority of the elected, it would take a majority of the quorum.
Okay.
You know, as with our legislature at times, they make changes and edits that don't necessarily clean up questions, but maybe create some while they're trying to clean up others. So there's a, there's a pending question out there right now, and in the municipal league cite, Mr. Alderman Johnson, I'm not sure if it came from you or some other person as to the reference, the actual statutory language they're citing in that is the old language, where it was pretty clear. The difficulty with the new language now is it talks about the majority vote, the aldermen shall be necessary to pass an ordinance proposal which extends or appropriates money. They used to say a majority vote, and I don't know it off the top of my head, but as you say, all the aldermen. And the question, I, the question that they've created is that they need to get rid of all when they changed it, and make it simply a simple majority of the present? Or do they intend to still include all aldermen when they took the word "all" out? And, and I'll tell you, that's a, that's a, to me, a kind of an unanswered question right now. Our general opinion on that is.
Is this something that changed recently?
Yeah, 2017, they amended all those statutes.
'Cause they don't pass, well, like Gillespie in this Credit P. Means, and usually the mayor always said, well, we all have to be on the same page for this to pass.
Yeah, and that's, that's never been true for everything. It was clearly true for some things under the old statute.
Claims are never useful.
Yeah, yeah.
Expenditures and appropriations.
Yeah, and it used to say expenditures, appropriations, and liabilities. So it used to even, the language even used to be broader under the old statute. So there has been, so if you look back at the changes, and the one way to do that, it looks like you told, did stuff to legislative page, I don't know if it came from you or somebody else, but, so when you're looking at these, if you look here at these numbers, see where it says 2017, that means it was amended in 2017.
I'll take your word for it.
Yeah, it does. And it's hard to, the one thing that you don't, it's hard with our legislature, is there's not a lot of what they call legislative history, you can go back and find out what they're trying to do. So you, you kinda end up reading the language and going, uh, well, when they took out the word "all," did they change how many people would have to vote for? And I'm not sure that that question, I know, at least as far as I know, has not been answered in, by the legislature or court, and I think it could be read either way at this time. 'Cause what, what the courts generally do is if there's an amendment to a statute, the court says, what did it provide for before, and why did they amend it? And the courts generally just look to, what did it read before and what does it read after? And if they took something out, they generally say the legislature meant to take it out. And so, but, you know, so, and I'll, I, you know, I don't necessarily like to see our legislators sometimes get things, get more confused, but it does happen occasionally. So I, to your question, long answer to a short question is, it was clear pre the 2017 amendment, that it would take a majority of all the aldermen. Post 2017 amendment, it's unclear as to whether they intended that change to change that. Because.
It would've got worse.
Yeah, well, I think what they were going for is, you know, it had that, it had that term, it had that term liability, which I thought was a weird term, because what's a liability? I mean, liability could mean so many different things, you know, is it a liability to adopt your, your pledges under your PUD for that property? Because is it a liability that someday you might have to fix them? And so I don't, I think it always meant to be like money, but terms, you know, some of our, some of our municipal statutes have been in place for a hundred years. You might be familiar, there's that, the second time appeal on the buffalo chip, and that all goes back to a statute that was put to, put in place basically as state law.
So does that mean it was amended in ninety-two?
Yeah, it was also amended in ninety-two, in 2017. And see, it says source law, eighteen ninety, chapter thirty-seven, article four. So it gives the history then, it's changed in ninety, nineteen oh-three, it's changed in nineteen nineteen, nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen ninety-two. So you get these, that's, those are just how you can see when they've changed it. So, I have my train of thought. So sometimes you get stuck even with a, with a word, and word usage has changed up a little bit, and you're trying to interpret a statute written in eighteen eighty. and you're trying to interpret a statute written in 1880, and where their word usage is different from what we use today. And in that case, the court's generally say, you look back to how the word was used in 1880. So, I'll tell you, they made it, they have made that issue as to the voting no clearer by their amendment. Actually, it made it less clear, because it used to say "all," and "all" was pretty much written, "all the elected aldermen." So, I, and Class III municipalities, they didn't change along Class III municipalities, which clearly says, "For money issues, it's a majority of the elected trustees." And there's five trustees, so you have to have three, always vote for it, even if there's only three at the meeting, which is your quorum.
Another question, if you have a, if you're advertising a council meeting, P&amp;Z meeting, whatever, and you don't have a quorum, can you, is it okay to go ahead and have a discussion period of everything that's on the agenda?
Well, so, if you don't have a quorum, so you don't have a, the, so, let's just take this, let's say, you have two council people show up for a meeting, and the mayor, there's people showing up in the audience, you can do it, one is two different ways. You could say, "Okay, this is an informational meeting, and we cannot take action, so if the people have questions, we might as well hear from the people that show up." That's totally entitled, because those two aldermen could go meet with that group at somebody's house. So, the fact that they have time, and so, like, a group shows up, and says, "Well, somebody got sick all of a sudden, so we don't have a quorum, so we can't act, but since you guys are all here, let's take input." There's not a violation of that if you could do it by just going to somebody's house and meeting with a bunch of people. So, the primary issue with the meetings is that you have to notice up, with the requisite timeframe, if you're gonna take action. Because, let's say, so, there's a Cracker Barrel in Piedmont this last weekend. There are three of the board of trustees that were there for Piedmont. So, what Piedmont usually does is they say, "We're gonna have a majority of quorum at the Cracker Barrel, but they can't take action." And they can all three sit together, they can all ask questions, as long as they're not talking about other issues, but just talking about the discussion going on. So, yeah, there's generally no violation to go ahead and take comment, because you could do that without... Now, with some, there's two different ways that I generally see that, and my preferred way is, if you don't have a quorum, say, "We don't have a quorum, we're gonna adjourn the meeting, but since all of you showed up, we're gonna still stick around if you want to talk about it and give us your thoughts." That's my preferred way to do that, because, you know, you don't have enough for a meeting, and you shouldn't be doing minutes or anything at that point. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, it just seems like you can ask three different outfits in the state, and you get three different answers, or talk to three different attorneys. One says, "Well, no, if you don't have a quorum, everybody goes home," you know?
Well, I mean, you can't take any official action, but that's certainly what they're getting at. But you can certainly talk about stuff, because if you don't, if, like I said, if you don't have a quorum, two of you can go meet with them, because you're not obligated to even notify that meeting, because you're not intending to have a quorum anyway.
Well, I'd say, "Well, since you've advertised, it's a council meeting, that's what it should be, to bring everybody together."
Yeah, I, like I said, my preferred, and I see that where some people say, "Well, we can't take any action, but if people want to come up and tell us your position, do that." I, my preferred way to deal with that is say, "Look, we can't take any action, we're gonna convene a meeting, then we're gonna recess, but since all of you showed up, we'll stick around, and if you guys want to talk about what's going on and give us your feedback, we're certainly glad to take that." Now, though, you know, we're only, you know, we're not a majority, so if you want a certain thing, you should come back to the next meeting and tell everybody.
How can you start a meeting if you don't have a quorum?
The law specifically says that you can open a meeting, declare you don't have a quorum, and then you close a meeting.
Okay.
And that's, corporations work the same way, so the, so you basically say, "This was scheduled, called meeting in order, call the row, we don't have a quorum, we're gonna make a motion to, kind of get a motion to adjourn." And that's generally the way I would see it, because since you can't have an official meeting, no sense doing pages of minutes. You like that, don't you? So, the, but again, and then the discussion, because you can have the discussion with the group, because you don't have a quorum at that point.
Okay. So, back to his first question, then your take is, it would be the majority of the councilmen present?
Well, that's the question, I don't, I think they've made this, I think they've made this...
I understand you know it's, but initially, you said that, so which way do you...
Majority of the votes present. So, here's, yeah, so here's, here's the issue that I see. I'll tell you that I think it's, I think it's a toss-up that can be read either way.
Okay. This is the majority vote of the aldermen, but it doesn't say "all," or it doesn't say "present"?
Or the present, because the statute I before hired called correctly, talks about, "Here's what you need for a form of alderman." And then the next statute says, "Majority of the aldermen." And you go like, "Present or all?" And they took the word "all" out last time, which made it clear.
So, we've been doing it as the majority of the aldermen present?
Okay.
And if we had been doing it the other way, I mean, it's just a flip of a coin at this point.
Yeah, again, that majority, that only applies to expend, expend or appropriate money.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, and I think there was a, or a passing ordinance. Yeah, so, like, today, yeah, the, I mean, so, yeah, so...
So, it's a flip of a coin?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you, I could, yeah.
Okay.
And if I could tell you, absolutely.
You're not able to do that.
Yeah, because the legislature, I think they're fixing something else.
So, essentially, what the municipal league has online is inaccurate.
Well, if you look at that one online, and I'll try to find that, I looked at it, and they're still citing the old language.
Pardon?
They're still citing the old language.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, the, yeah, the, I had, I had looked at that...
Did you forward a message to him? Okay, so he's got this language?
He's got the language, yeah.
Yeah, I can find that language.
That's the email that you had sent me, because I just sent it over to him, he said...
In fact...
You're gonna be here all day.
I think I've got the book.
So, that's what I was reading.
So, under, I still use books, I'm old enough. So, there's pocket parts, and so they haven't updated the big book since 2017, so I think that language is still here. That's 9810, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so here, 9810 says, "Concurrence of a majority of all the aldermen shall be necessary." And so, here they say, "The majority vote of the aldermen."
So, what else did they change then?
They changed, no, they changed here, it says, "To create a liability against," and then, but they left it, and they changed that. So, I mean, they reworked it, they reworked some in the front, and then they changed that voting language, which, so, the question then becomes, was that intended? Yeah, sure. And so, the pocket part has the new statutes in it.
Well, that's what I'm asking, if it changed, because in the past, it didn't work the way it's working today.
Yeah, I'm gonna tell you, I totally get it. And I tend to say, you know, it's always better, whenever you're short somebody, that always potentially causes problems, is, because you tend to more, you want to get as much input as you can. So, it's a, and I can look, but I don't think, the difficulty you have, so if the statute was passed in 17, it wouldn't have become effective until July of 17. So, it's been in place essentially two years, and I'll contact municipal league and see if there's been a, they're usually pretty good about if they heard anybody has had a case, because the one thing...
Call them too.
Yeah, oh, they didn't have any, okay.
Well, like, say she referred me to the online.
Yeah, and I was just looking at this council meeting.
Like, say, you call three agencies in the state and have three different stories.
Right, yeah, so...
Well, they're getting pretty good at just saying, "Talk to your city attorney."
City attorney, huh?
They used to give out information in their gun-shine.
Oh, it's an open meeting.
Big difference who you talk to.
I would, yeah, that's, that's true with the league, I think.
All right, well, thanks for helping us on this.
Yeah, I know, and I...
Thanks for taking the time.
Well, I have a, one of my, one of the founding partners, Jim Nelson, was a legislator in the 70s, and he said, "The best thing going for lawyers in business is the legislature, because they mess stuff up."
There you go. All right, was there any other things that anybody...
I just think, I know, because they're so involved with so many municipalities.
Right, and so, and I'm just looking at the municipal league site, and they have, they have the concurrence of a majority of all the aldermen shall be, they're citing the old statute still on their webpage. And in fact, I think maybe I'll call them tomorrow and say, "Hey, maybe you should update..." And it might be in their pocket.
You want their letter?
Yeah, well, I...
Got it, then.
Yeah, I have dealt with them, done some work with them in the past. Avon Taylor, the executive director, she's in, and I've started a couple of boards together, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Anything else you guys want to know about the firm or anything, or...
Okay, well, thanks for joining us tonight, Tal, Mr. Wazorki, we really appreciate it.
So, does it always mean you're gonna be here, or maybe another, or we have somebody else?
Yeah, so, it's my, it's my plan that I'll be your primary contact as interim. If the firm makes a proposal, we might have somebody else, because it depends, because we gotta kind of balance how many night meetings you have, because we've got partners kind of running all over in that group, because we do a lot, a lot of cities have night meetings. And the other thing that just, so everybody knows, maybe you know, maybe I don't, maybe you don't, but, so I'm also a Mead County Commissioner, so I've got commission meetings all day tomorrow, so I get to sit on that side.
But the phone thing works well?
Phone thing works well. In fact, I, it just, the first time we were on it, for some reason, we were getting cut off every hour on the hour, it would shut off, and I don't know whether it was our side or something else.
I think it has a lot to do with the service. We've had some conversations about going to a real phone service instead of a free conference number, which would give us more latitude, so I think once we do that...
It always lets call back in, you just kind of miss something.
Once we do that, it'll clarify.
I think the benefit, there, the one benefit that would be helpful is always if, if you know there's gonna be an issue come up where you're gonna want, you drop me an email even that afternoon, because what I would, what I generally do there, like, when I go to Piedmont, I might walk in and the councilman will say, "I've got," or their board of trustees there, but, they'll say, "Such and such on the agenda's coming up, and I got a couple of questions." And then during some of the preliminary stuff, I'll sit there and double-check it, and pull up a couple of statutes, so I'm, so I can kind of be ready for that question. That helps a lot, because it lets me kind of get a little bit more responsive immediately in the meeting. But if you ask me kind of cold, you'll get a lot of him and a haun, and a lot of...
Yeah, but as a council, we're supposed to come together for our questions for the attorney, correct?
We can do that, yes, and...
And we had that discussion before.
I thought we did.
And who accesses you?
Yeah.
And when, and so to try to keep costs to a minimum, and make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, and what, the distinction I'm making is, if you're going into a meeting and something's on the agenda that you know you want to ask me a question, you say, "On Agenda Item 5, I got the, I'm gonna have a following question."
Absolutely.
Rather than ask to me just on the phone and come back. That would be helpful. I think, I think from a cost, nothing drives cost up quicker than having every alderman and mayor call you all the same question over the course of a day. So, having that point of contact and having that, having that kind of funnel, so you get a single point, will save you a lot of costs, because it just...
Couldn't, we would know kind of which ones are maybe legal cop topics, couldn't we load that to the front end to...
Sure.
Yep, we could do that as well.
When you're on the phone to...
Yep, we could do that as well.
Get rid of you as quick as we can.
More power to you. See, we're done with their hangups and villain.
You know, I mean, I mean, it's only smart, you know? I mean, something might come up, but I might be able to wait till next time.
No, I'm never offended by people telling me that...
See you later.
Are you just at home then, when you're listening on the phone?
Uh, office.
Oh, you have to go in there?
Well, I could certainly call from home, but since you guys meet at 5:30, I generally work till 6:00 every night anyway. So, it's for me to stay later, and then I've got my big screen and so my small screen in front of me, and it's a little easier for me to pull stuff up.
Do you live in Piedmont?
Uh, I live, yeah, just not in Piedmont proper, I live, I have a Piedmont address, I live off what's called Erickson Ranch Road.
Okay.
No, it's that.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you can be part of it.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna be kind, yeah.
So, thank you, sir.
Sure.
And we look forward to this interim period and the assistance you can provide us.
Okay, you don't cross me, or you want me to go?
Um, you can, I just stay through the last of the discussion items.
Okay.
Okay, because we only have a couple left. So, moving on to Boys and Girls Club lease agreement, Brett, can you walk us through that?
You bet. So, a few meetings back, the topic of the Boys and Girls Club lease came up, and the question on one of our agendas for an action item was, did we want to put the Boys and Girls Club on notice to give them notification that we intended to change that lease structure? And so, we did that. And we said, "Look, we have an intent to change the wording of the lease." And so, that was due in by, I think, November 1st or something like that. So, then the next question was, or the next thing that I brought to you was some proposed changes that better aligned that lease agreement with other lease agreements that had been revised over the years. I know our city attorney, Frank Betman, and I sat down, I think it was 2017, where we sat down, we went through our lease agreements, and we made some significant changes, and talked about insurance coverage and liability and whatnot. So, we added a lot of language in there. And so, I presented that to you just as a packet insert, so that you could look at it on your own and see, you know, where we're headed, that we're just making it more uniform with what we've already done in the past. The next question that came up, or the next discussion item that came up, was there were some questions about the Boys and Girls Club financials that you as a group had requested, that you received from the Boys and Girls Club. I had a conversation with the director, Lisa Sagnelli, about those questions, and she came and she sat with you, and, you know, fielded some questions from you. And then also, there's some financials that she submitted into our interim finance officer for review, and those were emailed out to you right after we got them. So, my whole goal, you know, you don't have another copy of the lease in your packet, because I think we've got some bigger, higher-level things to cover before really I can drill down into the specifics of it. We also have a new city attorney on board, so I think, I think Mr. Wazork needs to look at what we've got, and so he's comfortable with it as well. And so, what I need from you is direction on where we're going with a few of these higher-level things. So, I've got, I've got five of them that we need to talk about, and to give me some direction of where we're going. I think the first one is, is the financial questions that were asked, and the financial and the answers that you received verbally from the director, and the financial paperwork that was submitted to our finance officer that was forwarded to you. Does that address all of your financial questions that you had? That's my first question to you. Or is there more questions that you would like to get responses to?
I'm satisfied with what you gave.
Pretty much everything they had, right?
Yeah. Well, what I could say, yes.
Okay. So, with that one then done, I'll move on to the next one. So, that gets more into the core of the lease. So, the questions that I have, and there may be more than these five that I have that you have, but these are just the ones that I think are important for me to proceed forward. One is a, a simple one, is the term of the lease. The old lease has been automatically renewing for the past several years. I mean, it's been renewing for probably about 10 years now. I know that we've changed gears with the way that we do lease agreements with the other entities. The chamber lease was just given a two-year lease, and so, I need direction as to where you would like to go with that, if you're looking at a one-year lease, a two-year lease. I think from our discussions, we're probably getting away from the automatic renewal leases. And so, I would ask you that question of what your comfort level is, as far as a two-year term.
Personally, I think one year, because there will be changes going on in and around the Boys and Girls Club with this project that's going on, the Main Street, no, excuse me, the Business Improvement Project. I think it's something that we'll probably want to be discussed later in the year for the next contract with them.
the next contract with them. So I think just a one-year contract at this time is good, and then later, if the council agrees, maybe go to a two-year. That's fine, but I think we need to leave it a year right now, so that we have the flexibility of changing it if need to with all the changes that are going on.
Any other?
Anyone else?
I'd probably go along with that.
Okay.
Would it be, would it be reasonable to have this lease essentially just follow the calendar year and just go till the end of this year?
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, with the council coming up, we've got a lot of elections going on this, this year, you know, the council could change. I think that would give the, the council time after election to start, and I think it should be brought up to them about this contract, because, you know, right now, I'm not necessarily looking at charging them anything just right now, because I know they already have their budget ready for next year, but I think it should be looked at before next budget meeting, city budget meetings of how they want to handle it with the Boys and Girls Club.
Good. Okay. So I will, I will make adjustments and have it.
I mean, that's just my feeling.
Yeah, I will, I will make adjustments if that's, if I have consensus to match it up to the end of the calendar.
I mean, I think they should probably be, might be paying something each month for the facility, yes, but do it just right now, no, because I know they already have their budget this year.
Good. My next question is the dollar amount. You know, that's probably one of the bigger ones of saying, you know, should there be a cost associated to that? So you're fine without a cost?
For this year. I think we should leave it for the, after the election, let the council deal with, you know, with any kind of compensation for the, for the building at all, for the year 20, you know, for next year, not this year. That's just, that's just me. I, I don't feel comfortable in trying to charge them something this year, because they do already have their.
Budget's already set.
Yeah. Yeah, that's already set, so that's something for the council to look at after the elections for next year, before, before city budget meetings.
So you're saying put that in July, you'll have a new council?
Yeah, so maybe start, maybe in August, no, actually, you're going to have budgets in August.
July, 21.
July, yeah.
So it has to be in July with the new?
Yeah, our budget, our public budget meeting started in July after the July 4th week. I mean, you know, Stacia, everybody's working on the budget already, end of May, so.
I mean, we could set something now, but, but for, for the next year.
So it'll be part of the budget conversations as far as income on our side, so it should be covered during the budget conversations. I don't know how the budget for the Boys and Girls Club runs, so I don't know if they establish theirs in the same timeframe that we do or not, but for, from their perspective, if you do charge around, it's going to be a liability on their side or an expense.
I would say have a discussion now on that.
Like what you said, for this year.
And if they want to change it, then they'll change it, you know, but that way at least there's direction, it's not last minute.
Sure. I, I just don't want to see them have to pay something this year, if they already have their budget set.
Yeah, and you, whatever comes out of that, you know, can be set for the 2021 season.
Okay, I agree with you.
Yep.
So the next question I have is the physical space to be leased. Right now, technically, the lease includes the building itself, not any of the exterior parking, or, you know, even that, none of it exterior to the building is part of the lease. So, you know, right now, the parking that they use on the south of the building is not technically theirs to use, I mean, it's not part of their lease, it's unsigned, you know, open available parking for anybody who wants to park there. I think it makes sense for them to park there, but they don't have any direct control over it. You know, in the racquetball court that currently exists, we're going to get to a point where there's going to be a bid board recommendation after we get done with this bid letting process of what we're doing with that racquetball court area, and it's going to be turned into a public place space. I think, Steve, you had mentioned that you didn't, if, as long as it's a public place space, it would be part of this agreement, but they would have access to use it just like anybody else would. So I just want to make sure that we're defining the physical parameters, you know, do you want to include that parking lot? Do you want to include, you know?
Well, the city maintains that and the snow removal and all that now, so if you're going to define, so, so there is a definition of parameters and it's just the building.
Correct.
And they overflow into these other areas.
Right now, the, the, the structure of the walls is the dividing line. They take care of everything on the inside of the building that's kind of daily operational stuff. We cover the infrastructure of the wall in the building and all the exterior maintenance, you know, for like the roof and whatnot. But, I'll leave Peterson, you touched on the, my next point is, the snow removal, you know, there is some grass to cut out there, things of that nature.
What about liability? Who's, what, what's this, what's the insurance situation? Do they provide insurance for the, inside the building?
I think we've been getting an annual certificate from them, from what I remember.
As additional insured?
Yeah.
So then the outside is still the city's property and.
Correct.
City's policies. So to place that onto them would be additional burden for insurance, I would suspect, when, I don't know, is there an issue with the physical space, or is just something that you want to make sure it's clarified?
I just want to make sure that if we're doing a total kind of rewrite, which we are in some respects, of getting away from the old format template of the, of the agreement to the new one, I just want to make sure that we visit kind of these higher topics to make sure that we have the intent of, of you guys.
Yeah, I'm probably fine with the way it is in terms of physical boundaries, and they spill over, but I, I don't know, especially if you're going to start talking about a different dollar amount, and then if you do that, then you're asking more dollar amounts to them.
I'm not so sure how many of them actually park on that side parking lot, don't they all pretty much park in the front parking spaces?
No, I think it gets pretty full in there.
Yeah, I would, I would say there's multiple cars that are parked in.
And people picking up kids, I, you know, see them drive in and out of there.
That's the west, what I see most of.
But I see cars sitting there for a while.
So gentlemen, we have a representative here from the Boys and Girls Club, would you like to hear from them right now?
Sure.
Sure.
Can you see them on the come up and state your name?
Robin Plaxton, I'm the Resource Development Director. To clarify the parking, the parking on the south side that's between the shed that's on the property and across the street to the school, all of us park there, so one. So there's anywhere from four to five vehicles, okay? During the school year, the first six, seven, or eight spots that are closest to, you know, the spot, the parking that's right across from the train.
The ankle parking?
Yeah.
Right in front of the building?
Yeah, well, that parking there that's just down from the senior center. During the school year, there's about seven to eight teacher cars that park there. On occasion, when I have had to leave and go do things between, either in Rapid for fundraising, things that I do, or go to the other two clubs to check in on them and assist them with anything that my job pertains to, I come back and there's unknown cars there, you know? And sometimes I find, you know, we find out that there was a teacher that was late getting into school, and they live outside of Rapid, it takes them a little bit, so then it's not been a big thing, plus the fact that her kids also, their kids also attend the club at the same time. So it's not been a very big issue, we just know that, we just move up a little bit closer towards the alley, you know? So I can say that there is anywhere from, today there were four vehicles there. Lisa shows up, there's five tomorrow, and then the one always parks down below, so just to clarify on that.
Well, what time do the vehicles normally start parking there?
The first one shows up at a quarter after seven in the morning. We have kids that arrive, we have, similar to a preschool, it's called prep, and the teacher van arrives at 7:15, we start getting kids at 7:30. And we appreciate so much, and it usually happens on Sunday nights and Mondays, that we have our five, six inches of snow and know when to clear it, because Dawn is usually the one that has cleared it. Bill has cleared it a couple times when he's been around, otherwise it's either I or, most of the time I, Susan did do it the last time, so. And so we appreciate that, because when we, when we have one teacher walking the door, she's going to get all the lights on, everything's dead up, and then the kids start arriving at 7:30. And we have kids that, we have eight, and they arrive anywhere between 7:30 and about So having that walkway between where the stairway is on the south end of that parking lot is always helpful and all that kind of thing. Do you have any other questions for me? I mean, as to, we have somebody that comes in and cleans nightly. We have a janitor, yeah, custodian janitor comes in Monday through Friday, works about four hours each night, vacuums, mops, cleans everything. Snow day on Monday, this past Monday, a week ago, she was in and worked most of the day, because of the sickness that's been going around, she's gone through and went through every room and top to bottom cleaning, Lysol, vacuum, mopping, and that's just been an opportunity that she's had, because we had no school that day, so she was called in. Otherwise, she did it over winter break, she was in for two days while I was there, because I'm usually there every day between 8:30 and 6 o'clock, so.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, thank you. So Brett, once you get through your questions, if you, if you have not gotten through them, then am I to understand that this will then become an action item to set the lease price at our next meeting?
Yep, so I will, I will put all of this together to fill in the blanks, you know, I've already started that process of getting it to look more like our other agreements that we had updated, that it's worth a legal review of what I've added to it, and then present it to you for your final approval.
Okay.
Did you get your snow removal question answered?
Yep, I think so. I didn't hear anybody disagree with you, so I'm assuming the maintenance and the physical space are fine the way that they've been going. My last topic or question, you know, we've kind of split the, the major repairs, maintenance repairs into a major and minor category, if you will. This one's where it's a little bit more nebulous, you know, the city's going to cover, if there's a wiring problem in the wall that's bad, or plumbing in the wall that's bad, and the, I know we have a boiler that's down there, if we have a problem with that, we're going to take care of that, we the city. When there was roof leaking, we the city take care of that, that's inherent to the structure. But there's other daily operational things of saying, you know, they, they're responsible for light bulbs, they're using the light bulbs. If there, if there's like a faucet that goes out, they're, they have been in charge of replacing the, the seals or whatever in there to make those function. So there's things that are used on a daily basis that they can wear out, and then there's the core infrastructure stuff that doesn't really, you know, wear out unless it's a fundamental major problem. So I will just continue that as is, I think it's worked fairly well. We always do have some conversations about, you know, who's going to do what, and we usually try to figure that out, so I don't think it's been a big deal. There's always going to be some, some overlap of what you think can get covered and whatnot, so.
Okay.
We'll put all that together, bring it back to you.
Okay.
Ken, can you find out what the going rate is per square foot for rental space in the city?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to discussion item AE, Appointment Process Policy, and Alderman Peterson had requested us on the agenda.
So, to the other alderman, I'd like to see us look at talking about a appointment process, is, you've all, all of us have experienced, we come to that July meeting and we're asked to vote on appointments. No pre-work, no, no job evaluations are presented to us or anything like that, and yet we're asked to make that decision again. So what I'm saying, when I presented a schedule, I'd like to see if we have any desire to set a appointment process for a mayor to make appointments.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
So, well, I would think we can discuss that, you know, in July is when the appointments are typically made. You have a couple of different things, you could potentially have new council people that don't have any knowledge or real experience, but I would think at least 60 days coming into that, we should at least maybe have a sense of a job evaluations on the appointments, and then be what the mayor's intentions are, and have a dialogue, and that can be, that would most likely be done in the executive session, that we can discuss that, so we can be prepared as we come into that.
What if we had a bunch of new members, you know, council people?
So then you could actually move the appointment process from that July to further down the road, maybe 30 or 45 days, so that A, they could get that information and have some time to digest it, so, I mean, it's a really good question, so that appointment happening in July might move down the path other ways, so get people up to speed.
Isn't there a timeframe after the mayor's?
For appointments?
Yeah.
That, I'm not sure of.
I know it's 30 days, isn't it?
Yep.
You remember, anybody remember?
30 days from.
Times the mayor's.
So, so that would be the, that would be the end threshold then, if that is that timeframe, but we could do the pre-work, and that pre-work could be handed off to the new people, and instead of making a decision in, in a meeting, they'd at least have a few weeks to, you know, do whatever, investigate.
I always had problems with that.
Yeah.
You know, when you're a newbie, you don't know nothing.
That's right.
You don't know the people. The guy asked me how he voted, well, sounded good, okay.
And, you know, if there's, if there's a new mayor coming in, yeah, that's going to give that new mayor some time too, to look at possible appointments that they want.
If there's pre-work done, yeah.
Yeah, so if we did some pre-work prior to that, at least they would be loaded up with some info.
So I'd like to understand what that pre-work would be. I had previously heard recommendations about advertising positions in the newspaper, and I have a little bit of a problem with that. The reason why I have a problem with that is if you've got someone that's a good staff member, and every year you have a process that's set up that really virtually asks them to reapply for their job, you're not going to retain anybody who has a skill set. When I came in here, I agree with a lot of what you're saying, I think going in blind and not really understanding what people do, or what the jobs, or, or how they're performing to someone's expectation, okay? And at this point, I think, I guess it would be the mayor's expectation, coming in blind without that information or any background of it is not a good thing to do. I mean, as a new alderman, you just sit there and say, it sounds like a good idea. So, you know, I would be, I would be very much supportive of something that engaged dialogue, or talked about, you know, let's talk about this, let's talk about performance, and, you know, what's happening, what's being worked on, how are these things being dealt with, but if we started to, to take a look at, at doing things that would be, could be viewed by an employee, and I know they're appointed, they're not necessarily employees, but could be viewed in a negative connotation, you may be pushing away a lot of talent, that's something that you really want to retain.
So, yeah, there's, there's got to be a way to go into it from being blind, and, you know, I haven't, I yet to see really any kind of performance evaluations on this arena, and so, and then open dialogue between the mayor and the council, because of course the mayor gets to a point and the council ultimately approves, so I just think that, you know, 30, 60 days out, we can figure out some type of schedule to.
There should be a process.
Have that discussion, have that dialogue, and, you know, if the mayor is, if we know that the mayor is going one direction or another, and it gives us the opportunity to debate that, and then ultimately vote on it, but at least we're prepared, instead of going, you know, who knows?
Sure.
So, how that? So how that, uh, what that looks like, I guess we can have a discussion. I don't think it has to be a, a major deal. I mean, I think, uh, 30 days out of July and then maybe 30 days post-July. Then if there's a rule that you have to have your appointments done within 30 days, I don't know.
Is there a rule?
I'm looking at your ordinance, right?
So we just bump that up to meet those, uh, trigger points and then, uh-
I mean, if, if it's our ordinance, we could change that ordinance to 45 days, couldn't we?
Yeah.
Well, I, I have one of those ordinances right in front of me. That's what I would like to communicate to you guys. Um, this is, this is 1.04.01. Appointment by mayor. This is under the city appointed officials, chapter, chapter 1.04. The mayor with the approval of the city council shall appoint the officers described in this chapter and shall officer, and such officer shall enter upon the discharge of their duties as soon as they have qualified and shall hold an office until appointment and qualification of their successors. Salaries of each officer shall be fixed by resolution. Set appointments shall be made at the first meeting May annually, except in election years, when set appointments be made the first month following the mayoral election. So if you're going to come up with a system, my only comment is we need to make sure that your ordinance reflects the intention of, of the group of where you're at.
So we don't follow our ordinance now then? It says May, huh?
Well, yeah, and this, and this goes back, this goes back, I forget what year it was, but there was, uh, there was a question that was brought up based upon what the state legislature had done, uh, and the assumption that it somehow affected our internal operations with the code. And so that we've been doing it wrong for probably about eight years now.
So back to Steve's question then, is we can adjust that in our ordinance to make, to reflect a policy if we want to do that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, whatever you come up with, you need to make sure it doesn't violate your-
Number one, it looks like we need to correct our ordinance the way it is now if we're going to continue to do it the way we're doing it. Uh, correct?
So the ordinance basically says in an election year, the appointment, it will be made, so July, right? That's when, that's when the officer will take effect.
Should be made the first month following the mayoral election.
Yeah, first month, so that would be July. We're not, we're only half on it because-
Well, because there's always an election.
Right, but not a mayoral election. You've got a mayoral election every two years.
Right.
Right, with the exception of last year, you had a mayoral election.
Is it specifically calling out a mayoral?
It happens every year.
Yeah, so, uh-
No, it's-
There's two things, there's two things that don't jive.
Except in election years.
Yeah.
But doesn't necessarily say mayor.
No, but the mayor is the one making the appointment.
Mayoral election, yeah.
Right. So it, it, I could see that one being assumed as mayoral election. So we haven't necessarily been doing it wrong all this time. I think if anything, it's been prior years when there hasn't been a mayoral election, we haven't been, those appointments either were not being made in July or I don't know how those appointments really functioned in the past. So there's, you know, there's-
But every other year, we must be doing it wrong.
Right, every other year. So, so I think the point though-
Look, we got half right.
Half right, right? We're consistently wrong. Yeah. So I guess, you know, from my opinion, the overarching theme in what we're talking about here is no surprises. Okay? Um, and yes, you know, I agree, there's a lot of things that we could put a process around, but the one big thing that we need to make sure, and I don't know if you put a process around this to make sure it happens or what, is that we have good ongoing dialogue relative to what's happening in the organization. Okay? So on one hand, yep, we get hit because we have a lot of executive sessions, but on the other hand, we're having those executive sessions to communicate employee information and things like that.
Well, I'm happy to talk about that in public. I'm happy to talk about anything in public, but when it comes to, for that kind of stuff, it typically ends up being-
You can't do it.
Yeah.
Exactly. Right, because you're, you're breaching some employment related laws. So I guess where I'm going with this is there needs to be more interaction on a council level and it's one of the things that I talk to everybody about, one of the things that I'd like to do. Now, I can't guarantee for June, if I'll be here, whoever takes this over, how they're going to handle it, but I think that's a critical piece and that's the commitment that you need from whoever takes the mayoral seat. There has to be communication and discussion regarding employees and employee performance. Understand, we're not always going to agree. There's laws that we have to follow, there's things that we need to look at, but when we're talking about making this appointment process, you know, you've got one side of the clinic says, well, it's the mayor and they just need to get approval from the council. Well, I'd like to know who I'm approving too, if I'm sitting in a council seat. So I think that does involve some dialogue and communication. So, you know, you're talking about a process that starts 60 days before. I think that's a, that's a great idea. So at that point in time, the mayor should have some idea of the conversations and start that dialogue at that point in time. Maybe it backs up into May when the information is available to be able to have that conversation. And those things I'm good at. What, what I, I question and what I want to make sure we don't actually hurt ourselves by doing is putting in a process that's so rigid that we make these positions that we need to fill, that are critical positions for our, for our town, something that we can't get good people for because they're very off-putting.
I, I don't know why you need to go there.
Why you need to go where?
Where you're going with that. I mean, I think that's just a simple process of-
Okay.
How do we communicate what the mayor to us and have a dialogue between the mayor and the council people and set up a process for that.
Okay.
And, uh, being cognitive of, of other things, I guess, but I mean, it's just, it, we don't have to make it that arduous and just, it's just a conversation of, hey, how do you think this is going? Why do you, why do you want to appoint this person? What do you think? Blah, blah, blah. And you're going to make, the mayor's going to make their appointments anyway. The mayor would know going into it how the council feels and I think that's good super dialogue.
It's good dialogue and it's, it's good to know-
It never happened in the past.
Where you stand, and I don't disagree with you when I said on council, it didn't happen in the past. There's an opportunity to change it and do things the right way. And, you know, maybe is it a process or maybe is it just we're aware of the fact that we are going to have employee discussions that first meeting in June or whatever it is? So we will have an executive session item that deals with, um, employees.
Yeah, more expectation from mayor to say, this is how you go about your appointment process because you set something in place to say, hey, you're going to have discussions.
So we're talking about a process and you're looking for me to create that process? Is that what I'm understanding?
You're the CEO and you're the one that's overseeing the staff.
Okay.
So you should know, and you're the one that's going to be making the appointments.
Yep.
So you should know why and how-
Right.
And, and be able to debate why you're going to do your appointment-
Right.
To the council who's got to approve it. So the process is really, I think you might make a bigger deal out of this to say, the mayor, in their appointment process, 60 days out or 30 days out or 45 days out, will be communicating to the council.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe you don't, and we rewrite this to make it jive with our dates that works, right?
Okay.
And then say 30 days after people are elected or if there's a turnover, they can have that information. If you go out and somebody comes in, you can turn over that information.
Right, it's all available.
I mean, so that's information that we're, as a council, would be expecting from you currently as the mayor or whomever that mayor might be-
Right.
Uh, to provide us that information so we can say, hey, this is why you want to make that appointment.
Oh, no, and I understand and maybe I have a disconnect in, in how you're, um, quantifying process. Right, I talked about having, um, a discussion as a, as a executive session in that timeframe in order to communicate that. So I'm saying, that's what I think, that's how we can accomplish that and I don't know if you're looking for more than that.
So you could say, you know, uh, people get sworn in the first meeting in July and so you could say, uh, last meeting in May, you start the discussion with the council on appointments.
Okay.
I mean, it could be that simple.
Yeah, and I guess I was going there.
And then you could say, if there's some rule that they have to be in at a certain time, then we, we just watch those trigger points.
So, and, and I see that and I, that was one of the things that I had actually talked to everybody about as far as sharing knowledge and information on employees. So I was headed in that direction. I didn't see it as a process. I thought it was just the job of the mayor to make sure that we keep the council informed on what's going on.
So you like that idea today? What about the next mayor?
Well, you're going to have a meeting in May, the election ain't until June.
Yeah.
It, it isn't about the election though, is it?
Well, you're saying it's a meeting.
It's about the mayor, current mayor that's, uh, looking at, this is what they would do. They may or may not be applying, they may not or may not be-
She may not be here in June.
I get that, but she could supply, she's the one that's the most current with those employees and staff that can relay and hand over that information. At least the council, current council, this is the way I would go.
Yeah, but you might have a new person in June or whatever she hands over.
I get it, I get it. We can't control all of that, but I mean, a lot of this, we, we would have had these dialogues and a lot of this, uh, what's happened in the past would, would have been alleviated, I think. So I get that she might not be in this, and just using you as a example because of the situation, uh, is that she might not be there, but she's there till day end, her end date. So, I mean, hey, I'm not going to be here, so I'm not going to do this stuff? You know, she's the one working with them. She's got to relay it to us as a council, we may not be there. You know, all of us may not be there. Uh, or three, three people might not be there at any, um, one, one year and two people might not be there the next year.
But at least the next council would have a head start on what, what they need to-
This would be the notes and here he hands over, just like if he's not going to be here as an attorney, he's going to hand over his notes to the next guy. Doesn't mean the next guy's going to-
Read them.
Not use them for charman, you know, but whatever.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm-
Sorry. I mean, I'm not, nothing against you.
No, no.
But my point is, is that, you know, we, nobody's, you know, but there's a process so that there's dialogue instead of coming to a meeting and saying, I'm appointing this person and, oh, okay, that's it. That, that has been the standard of operation. I don't think it's a good operation for an organization like this.
And I don't disagree with you, that's why we've had conversations on staff and turnover and things like that, right? You, I've brought you guys in the loop, so that's where I sit and I agree.
Well, we're talking about appointments.
Right, but it's still somebody that's working for the city. I look at it as a player, someone who needs certain skill sets in order to be able to do a job within the city. So, yep, I know we're talking about appointments and I agree that open dialogue is important. We need to sit and we need to talk about it. Whatever, whatever you want to put in in dates, that's fine. I mean, to me, I see it as those conversations that need to happen regularly, so.
That's you. Yeah, and so the next person that says, hey, here's how you do the appointment process.
Yep.
So why is that humorous?
I'm not-
Why is, why is that like, uh, foreign? Because I would like that dialogue. You're saying you would like that too. I'm saying it hasn't hap- John, has that happened ever since you've been here?
What, no?
The people, the mayors told you ahead of time what their appointments are?
Yeah.
And you've had dialogue with mayors in the past?
Well, a lot of times, yeah. We know who's going to be appointed before the day I'm appoint your role.
Yeah, well, it didn't happen for me.
So-
It always has, you know, I'm not, but it has happened.
Well, I, I know it's happened to me twice when I was on the council before and, and this time. The only thing that saved me is I was on the P and Z before I got onto the council the first time, so I knew all the city employees and all, you know. Uh, and this time, I, I still was in connect with all of the city employees, you know, or who was going to be appointed. But if I was someone new coming in, uh, that didn't really know everyone, I'd, I'd really have problems with wanting to make an appointment on my first meeting.
So you had mentioned this isn't humorous. I don't know why you made that comment.
I just, uh-
Okay, I'm sitting here telling you that that is how I work and when I tell you that, you come back and say, well, what about the person after you? I only have control over my person and I-
We have control over a process that we can create for a mayor to say, here's the blueprint of what you do.
Okay, and that's why I was coming to you guys to say, then what do you want? I see that there are discussions that you can have at specific times in your, in your council and your executive sessions and you tell me I have to come up with the process, but I don't know what your expectations are.
Uh, no, I'm not telling you to come up with the process. I'm having this dialogue right now to say, we can come up with, we can come up with a process to say, hey, at this time, you know, three meetings out, you're going to say to us, here's what I'm thinking, what your guys' opinions.
I had thought that, I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. I had thought that you said that I'm the CEO, so it's my deal to come up with the process for you.
It's your deal to come up with the, you, you're the one that's overseeing the staff. You're the one that's going to give us the information and you're the one, in your case, going to say, this is why you want to appoint these people.
Yep.
And then that dialogue and that debate can happen.
Yep, absolutely.
That's what, that's, this is what this is about.
Right.
So the process is really simple. Hey, three meetings before the people get sworn in, we're going to have this discussion on appointments. We can have a discussion in that meeting. We have time to have another discussion if it got, you know, whatever it went. And then maybe that appointments aren't put into place until 30 days, the second meeting after the, uh, swearing. So there's a process.
Okay. So you're suggesting that, that we modify our ordinances to include that process in there?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Is, is it 30 days or is it longer after?
Since first month, doesn't it?
Yeah. So is that a state statute or just our city?
It's just, that is a city thing, so I don't know if there's a state statute.
Yeah, there are some state statutes that talk about appointment of officers. Um, so, and the state statutes, you get some people say that you got to renew appointments every year. Uh, however, if you read those state statutes generally, you can appoint, um, that person generally serves until you appoint somebody different.
Yeah.
And your guys' ordinance, just looking at it tonight, mirrors that because it says that, um, uh, officers shall enter upon and discharge of duties as soon as they qualify and hold office until appointment and qualification of their successors. So generally, the way you see that work is if you're just carrying somebody over, some, some cities always reappoint, some cities just say, I'll clear this gaff to continue. Um, I think the idea of, I think basically what you're talking about is we should have some annual review kind of discussion from the mayor saying, here's what we got for employees and these ones that are appointed and if you time it. Um, and I think the idea of, of that discussion, it never hurts to have that, you know, employee discussion. Generally, you do that in executive session, say, here's the issues I see, do anybody else have other issues with them? Because, you know, I would intend to let them stay and generally then your appointments, if somebody has left, you are doing those because you're actually going through a hiring process. But the one thing I'd say about, uh, giving a process and then putting in your ordinance, I would generally recommend that. I would generally recommend that you agree to a process, maybe reduce it to writing. But if you put in an ordinance and you decide, you decide, uh, you know, we should do that a little bit different, you don't have any flexibility. Um, so, uh, like say, like the example of, let's have a meeting in May to discuss. What if the new mayor says, I'd like to do that earlier in April. Well, you know, can we do it in April? The ordinance is May or, uh, so those kind of like more kind of day in, day out.
So you could use language like honor before.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
But, uh, I just, I, you know, those kind of procedural stuffs, I think are tough to put in ordinances because you just, it's just harder to comply with. Yeah, because they, they just cut some of your flexibility out. But, yeah, so that, that's generally how I see it. Um, I think it's always a good idea to do an annual review of your employees and I think it's always good to have input from the aldermen because they hear different things than maybe the mayor doesn't, um, as part of that process.
That'd be okay every other year, but how about the mayor year of election? Because it may not be, you know, the mayor might get beat, beat out that.
Yeah, so, you know, and it does say it takes approval of the council with the mayor to appoint. So, generally, that's, I, that's why I think it's a good idea to maybe talk about it before you have an election, especially contest one, because you transition people. And then when the newer mayor comes on, I mean, some mayors come in and, you know, it's their, their heads will roll kinda mayors, you know, and, uh, some mayors come in and they, and they want and they need some direction and, yeah, generally, they'll take it from the, the returning alderman or the aldermen that are still on, saying, we've already talked about this person, here's the issue, bringing you up to speed. Um, so, yeah, those, I, like I said, it's, it's nice to have maybe an idea of how it's gonna happen. I think trying to drop it into ordinance becomes a little more tricky because we...
So, how do you create something that could, uh, with flexibility if you need it? I mean, in terms of time, I don't think it, it's so much that the time, it has to happen at certain intervals, obviously, but, uh, that here's a blueprint of how you go about doing your appointment.
Right, so generally, what I would see is, I don't know, do you guys got an employee handbook?
Yes.
Yeah, so you could maybe even adopt it as part of your employee handbook as for appointed officials. Here's a, here's a review process that we do. And then, um, and then what happens if you, if a new mayor comes in and says, you know, I'd like to change that up a bit, it's just a resolution. You don't have to publish it, you don't have to vet it.
Sure.
And so it's just a little bit easier, so, uh, I, I think those kinda processes work better, because again, you get a new mayor who just does it a little bit differently and everybody says, well, yeah, if you did it that way, it's fine, but it's an, it's an ordinance, you can. Um, it tends, it tends to be cleaner to adopt a, a process, and I tend to see those in, like, handbooks.
So, here's part of our, uh, personnel policy, and there's in the point of official section.
Yeah, it'd be a good place to work.
So...
So...
Um, so, yeah. The bottom line for me is, is that if that dialogue does happen, so that maybe it does or sometimes it does, or that there's a process for a person to, um, make sure we go through that.
Now, some things at the municipal league conference years ago, they talked about some of these small towns, new appointment, and maybe the mayor appointed the finance officer because it was his wife's brand, you know? How else can I not know how to balance a checkbook if she can run QuickBooks or something?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's, uh...
So, do all of you have an updated copy of the employee handbook?
I don't know.
Okay, I'll get you, I'll get you all copies.
Is there revision? Do you know what the revised date was?
Um, July twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen or seventeen?
Mine's reflective of twenty-fourteen.
Okay, and there, I'll check on the, um, most updated version and we'll get you the updated employee handbook.
There might be an updated one for that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, wherever we put it, you know, or make it so that, um, so that those would be an expectation on the mayor to, to have that dialogue. Right now, they don't need to.
I agree with you.
I think it's beneficial dialogue to have, and whether it changes anything or not, but at least, uh, it might bring out, um, solutions.
Cause we actually kinda had this discussion, what, six months ago? Originally? I think we kinda discussed this six months ago.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I'm just looking for consensus at the council if they think that that's a good idea.
Uh, I do, I think it's a good idea.
I know with years passed, you know, a lot of times we, there's a few times that the mayor might just pull somebody out of the air, but for the most part, we, the council knew that the plans were on appointments.
Correct.
Or maybe he didn't know.
I don't know. I'm not a councilman. No, I don't know those discussions.
So, or you, you're saying you'll come back next meeting with a more detailed?
I sure can, I, I, you know, I'm looking for what works. I mean, I'm not sure, I, I can throw out dates and I can do it right now. Say by on or before or prior to, uh, the first meeting in June, the mayor reports to the council on their, where they're going, where they would be going. Maybe the mayor's not gonna be there, but I'd say, this is what my recommendations are for appointments. And then those dialogues. And then if we, do we, have we, do we determine when the appointments have to be made?
But what if, what if the mayor makes, comes in and gives the recommendations and then the election and the mayor ain't there anymore?
Well, what if she's not gonna be mayor? Or she, I mean, I'm just using you as an example again, uh, she decides not to run. I mean, so I'll just make it even harder. But she can still give her recommend, she's still working with that staff until the end date, and so she can give the recommendation, uh, the council can, the point is, is to get the council and the mayor talking about those things.
Right, if you have a new mayor coming in, they still have, what, thirty days after election to have their appointments made.
That information can be transferred to the new mayor, and they can do whatever they want with that.
Yeah, they could, but at least they would ask me information to start.
They don't have to take it, they can throw it away or whatever, and they're, and then the council will deal with their appointments.
So, can I just ask a question? Instead of focusing on appointments and the timeframes for appointments, would the performance appraisal process solve some of what you're talking about right now? So, I know that we've talked about that in the past, um, and this year, we went with whatever the flat rate thing was, but we've been talking about the ability to be able to recognize people for the jobs that they do, okay? Which would include some kind of performance evaluation or appraisal, right? That would include not only input from the council, but input from the citizens and those kind of, and the people that they deal with to understand the personality and some of that. You are kind of a ways away from doing objectives, but there's some high level ones, quantitative objectives. But there's some objectives that we can talk about that would be customer service related and reports on time and things like that. So, if the city gets, and again, I don't know who it might be that does this, but if the city gets to a position where there is regular performance discussions, would that alleviate the need, which would include appointed people as well?
Well, I think, you know, the whole staff in the coun, that, those dialogues should be happening, you know, who, you know, not all at once with everybody, maybe just, you know, stretch them.
Well, it might happen all at once, but...
Whatever, but, uh, it should be happening, the council should know, instead of hearing this from someone and that from someone, should be hearing it.
Right, so I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, right?
I'm not precluding those other staff members.
No, I'm, I'm not, but I'm asking if that would serve the same purpose that you're talking about here, understanding people and where they are. And, you know, maybe at that point, then the conversation that happens in the beginning of May is, well, you know, we, we know the performance, this person is doing a great job, I plan on reappointing them. That's part of that process. I'm just offering another option that might not necessitate the need for creating something separate and going through all that, but just a regular, good, common best practice to have in an organization, so.
Like, kinda like communication.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, that's, that's what this is all about.
Yeah.
So, however we get there, that it's consistent and it doesn't happen with you and then falls away with the next person and the next person for, that's, so how do you create that consistency? I don't have the answer for that, but I'm telling that, you know, that's what needs to happen, in my opinion, in my opinion.
You know, and, and maybe we can all give this some thought and come back maybe in the next meeting or two and have another discussion on it.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I just wanna give it out there, maybe if you guys think it's a waste of time, then so be it, but...
I don't think anybody says it's a waste of time. I think it's a good idea.
To have, uh, the council and the mayor dialoguing in that way, I think is completely worthwhile.
Okay. Okay. Any other conversation on that, or do you wanna move on?
Yeah.
Okay, refinance general obligation bond.
So, last time I brought to your attention the idea of, you know, how, you know, financing, how would we, how could we do some stuff? Uh, I sent this out to the council people. Um, here's, uh, three, and this is just, uh, uh, working with Toby, um, which has no problem talking and dialoguing about this.
I have this one.
Um, so I had him do three scenarios in, uh, in terms of our bond, our current bond is gonna come due, uh, and paid off, is my understanding, in twenty-twenty-six. Uh, we're currently spending a little under, we'll just call it two hundred, but it's a little under two hundred thousand a year for debt reduction in, uh, which is interest and principal. And I'm suggesting, while rates are still low, relatively low, we know we have multiple items to deal with, and, uh, so I did a one million dollar bond, a one and a half million dollar bond, and a two point three million dollar bond. They're, they're relevant in the numbers, it just gives a range. And if we did a one million dollar bond, we would, uh, current, like say, tomorrow, we would have additional debt, and it would be an interest only payment. They'd set up for the first six years until the other bond is paid off as interest only payments of additional twenty thousand dollars. We'd have a million dollars to go do something with, um, in terms of if we felt, uh, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, and then the original two hundred thousand would be applied to the new bond, and in that case, this would pay off, pay off in twenty-thirty-two. So, we, we certainly just extended the payment, but we're also, uh, receiving and getting something for that in terms of, we fixed the infrastructure of our water links, which has got to raise to the high level. Uh, you could pave roads, we could, whatever, parks, uh, we can define what a priority list, if any. Uh, one point five million dollar bond would be our interest only payment for the first six years, would be thirty-two thousand, and if we did a, uh, and then of course, after six years, it would go to the current payment that we're paying right now, uh, of two hundred thousand roughly, approximately, and then if we did two point three million, uh, we would add an additional, uh, I think it was, uh, fifty-four or something like that. Um, or, anyway, I, I think you get the idea, so, uh, fifty-four thousand. So, that would give us money to do, uh, things with if we, so, that's the other thing, we talked about a priority list, I don't know where that ever got to, but we, I don't know that we've ever come up with a priority list, uh, but we need to be thinking about it. Uh, and, you know, in twenty-twenty-six, who knows what interest rates will be, but they're historically low now, and it would be to the constituents of this county, you're gonna, you're good. You're gonna do, you know, you gotta, you gotta deal with some of this stuff, so. And then the other thing is, is where are we at with the water tower? I thought we were supposed to get a report on what that loan would look like and all of that. Where is that at?
So, we haven't gotten to Brett's report out yet?
Okay.
If she has information.
Okay, so, uh, that's what I'm throwing at you. I say we heightened the idea of what we think priorities might be, and if we think that some idea that bonding now with interest only payments till the other one pays off would make any sense at all. That makes sense, if you guys got any questions, so basic...
Does this affect our borrowing power?
Well, we have a debt limit that, you know, obviously, when we did the road thing, they borrowed two point six million, which we had, we didn't max out, I don't believe, or, or certainly the, since two thousand six, seven and eight or whatever, our, our debt limit, uh, and there's different debt limit, there's two different debt limits, as I understand, one's a ten percent, one's a five percent, uh, depending on what you're using for, uh, you know, roads, sewer and water, and Brett probably knows a little more about that, but at any rate, um, since we originally bonded for the roads that you guys decided to pave whatever, uh, and the rest of those roads are, you know, um, everybody's real estate tax has gone to pay that debt down. So, they, they obligated, you know, roughly two hundred thousand out of the real estate tax that we get from, into the city to pay that, that was set aside to say, that's what we're using that money for. Well, we're used to paying that now, and I'm not suggesting that we necessarily change that, it's just that we can get some things done. You know, Bill made the comment that our influx of water into the sewer plant is costing us anywhere from eighty to a hundred thousand a year.
Yeah, we, we have to do something about it.
Yeah, so, you know, we certainly could absorb for six years and then go back to the same payment we're paying now, so I think it's a realistic conversation to have, and I think it's rather than kicking the can down the road.
How far would I want, I don't know how far to get pavement to, to get everybody off our back.
So...
Well, I mean, I think you could do several things. I think you could, you know, might not pave everything, you could do partial, you know, borrow some and pay, pay some, pave some, infrastructure some, you know, I mean, I think that question really comes back to, uh, another dialogue that we need to finish, and that is, what's our priorities? Put them all on, on the table and say, okay, let's start knocking some of these things out.
So, if I could piggyback off of what you're saying, Jim, um, I wholeheartedly agree with you, we need to look at priorities. Um, just based on some comments, and this is, this is good to look at general, a general obligation bond, because it is a way to be able to secure finances to do the work, but it seems more logical, and in my experience, you kinda figure out what the work is and what you need done, and how much it's gonna cost you before you start taking a look at how much money I'm gonna get for it. So, um, this is a valid way that we can potentially secure funds to do some things. I think the part that we're missing right now, as you said, is the priority. What are our priority items? So, while I understand people are complaining about roads being paved, I also know that we're increasing our population. I know that our vacation population is gonna increase, I know that we're at capacity at our Highside Water Tower. I don't know what our plans are as a city as far as where are we gonna be in ten, fifteen years? Are we looking at annexation? Are we looking at, um, organic growth? Are we looking at growth in the tourism industry? You know, what do we wanna be? So, I know that when I first came on board sometime in July or August, um, I had put, I had put together what I had considered for use as a tool, some way that it could help you guys drive decisions and make decisions relative to priority of work that needs to be done. And, um, I had not heard any feedback from it, and it just kind of fell on ears. However, that mechanism is still available. Um, I would suggest that the way to look at this is actually sit down and have some discussion sessions and working sessions on what are our priorities as a city. Um, you know, we've got, when we look at roads, I don't just see roads as being paved, I see roads that are in disrepair. I see roads that are within city limits that we don't facilitate or care for. Um, I got a, I got a call today about a road that doesn't get sanded because it's not a city road, however, it's, it's dangerous for those people. So, some of the things that we need to do when we take a look at this is if we do categorize roads as something that's a priority, then we need to understand what we have out there. What are those roads that need to be paved? What are those roads that, what's the, the maintenance on them? What are the other roads? What are the ones that we don't own? What does it need to take it to get there? And then create a priority in roads itself. So, again, I think this is a great idea, and I'm really glad to hear thought being put into priorities. Um, and again, work being done to understand what we could do from a bonding perspective is good work, but we're bonding or we're looking for money and we don't know what we need yet. So, that's kinda where, well, now you're laughing, so I can ask you the same question.
I am laughing because I'm, I'm, and thank you for asking the question, because I said, we need to prioritize.
Okay.
We also need to know if we have monies and access to monies to be able to do stuff.
Right.
And so when you prioritize, you can say, wow, this is what, this kinda money would cost us? Are we willing to do that? And start to have those conversations.
Okay.
So, uh, that's why I'm laughing, because I, I, we're on the same page, and I don't know what you added there, but I, I am saying, yes, Kathy, we need to have a priority discussion, and we also need to know where our funds can come from and where, where it's going. That's our job.
So, then, perha, okay, so then perhaps the conversation that we need to have is, what is that plan and how do we get us there, right? So, what, what are the things we need to look at? What are the components of it? And then understand how we drive to the end solution and what we need.
Sure.
So, instead of just sitting here talking about it and then talking about it again in another six months, and in another six months after that, what are we gonna do from here? So, we've got information, what are we gonna do? What's gonna be our next step? So, what do we expect to do at the next meeting?
Have a priority discussion on the things that we need to get done.
Okay.
I think we can do that and logically do that. We already, I mean, I listed three or four things, you guys might have five or six. I mean, we can do that. That's what needs to be done.
So, then the expectation is that you're gonna come and you're gonna feed all the priorities? You're gonna feed all the things that need to be worked on?
Am I gonna feed all the priorities? No, I, I, I already, I've already listed five or six of them to my fellow aldermen and said, hey, what do you guys think?
I think as a council, we all need to...
Yeah, yeah.
I'd be more than happy to reshare that document that stated that had a list of everything that we had, that was used to...
Can you email that out to us?
Yes, 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 and again, the, the way that things laid in the list was just based on some type of scoring tool to see if you could help, if it helped you prioritize whatever it was, but there's a really, there's a really long list, and some of the things are already in, in play, so.
And I think you should throw everything in but the kitchen sink at the list, and then you sit and prioritize off of that.
I mean, just like we did the budget.
Exactly, so, okay. Um, anything else on this? You folks wanna recognize the audience, or do you just wanna move on?
Sure.
Okay, if you wanna say something, please come forward.
Vic Alexander, um, one of those things that we're talking about here that is, I think is an emergency, it's like a building on fire, and it's gonna go ahead and be a little fire for a long time, but that infiltration and that hundred thousand that we're, whether it's a hundred thousand, whether it's thirty thousand, we're bleeding that, everything that's bleeding right now. And it shouldn't be hard to figure out a priority to bring that to the top and start looking at what, I mean, it's, it's been talked about for a year and a half, two years, and it's, that infiltration is big. I don't know if we have to create a whole priority list when that obviously comes right when that obviously comes right to the top, at least in my mind. Kicking it out there.
Thank you.
So detail that out and say, "Okay, hey, all right. So we say that's number one." I'm just saying, not saying we're going to say that. Then we say, "Okay, let's find out. Let's get people in here, spend a little money to find out where these are, get some bids, and then we know what that dollar amount is." In the meantime, we can be looking at other things, too, and what those dollar amounts are. Add it together and say, "Hey, this is what we could do. Do we feel like we want to burden the citizens for another 10 years, five years, 20 years on a couple hundred thousand dollars a year? And then get this stuff done and fixed and out of the way."
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. We're going to go ahead and close that section, close public comments. So now let's go ahead and move on to reports. So Alderman, let's start with Alderman Johnson.
This is it. I'll wait. Oh, hang on a second.
Okay. Alderman Jarvis.
I'll save mine for next meeting.
Okay. Alderman Peterson.
Just, you know, the chili cook-off thing and the... I don't know about the chocolate thing. We get down there, but, you know... And Janet's deal with the game bird, so she already talked to you about that. But I think the chili thing is always a good community booster.
Okay. I'll be brief with mine. So I attended the P&amp;Z meeting. They're continuing to do work on the transient vendor project that was put on the table.
I'm busy, ma'am.
You can go. Thank you.
No problem. You know, I want to save you those.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Talbot.
It's nice to meet you all. It's nice to meet you.
Absolutely, no.
Thank you. Thanks for answering my questions.
Yeah, or giving you what answer I could.
Trust me.
Okay, and P&amp;Z is continuing to work through items that are associated with the new development. So there was a lot of interaction on the PUD and things like that. And there were a lot of people in the audience, which was good. Romans for the new sidewalk. So I know that we've addressed it at meetings in the past, but I'm still getting a lot of questions and some suggestions from citizens. So I do plan on doing an article in the newspaper to address that. Why are they so high? Why don't we have sections that we can go into at different parts in the block? I don't know that we've got one single solution on how to communicate it or explain to people that it's going to be the way it is, but I'm going to try through that means. Let's see. I did receive a notification that came in after the last meeting that we had. And just so we can make this public record, it was sent to me. It's an order for the Supreme Court of the state of South Dakota. It's a motion to dismiss the appeal. So the lawsuit that we have been discussing for a long time, we received documentation from the plaintiff's attorney, which reads as follows. "Pursuant to the South Dakota Rules of Civil Procedure, appellee Jim Peterson and John Johnson, by and through their attorney, Stephen D. Sandvin Law Office PC, hereby move to dismiss the appeal filed in the above-caption matter against appellees Kathy Skorzuski, William Minor, Jason Gillespie, Frank Bettman, and Brett McMackin on the grounds that various relevant positions within the city of Hill City are no longer relevant to this appeal. And therefore, appellee does not believe that proceeding with the appeal is expedient at this time. On this basis, the appellee files this motion to dismiss their appeal. In addition to expediency as described above, the appellee desires to preserve the court's resources and hereby requires that this court grant the instant motion to dismiss." So that was information that we received. It indicated that it was delivered on the 29th. I do not have a date that it was actually filed, but I expect that it has been since January 29th. So hopefully, that brings that one to a conclusion. I received a report from Public Works. So as we discussed in the last meeting, we have a new Public Works director. He's given me a handwritten report, which basically talks about snow plowing that he's done. There's been a couple of water leaks. So it gives us the basic report, which we are going to start including in our packets on a regular basis. He was just running a little bit behind. I would like to see him come up here and have some opportunity to interact with city council members. So quarterly, he will be put on our agenda as a discussion item. And in addition to anything that he's covered, we will go ahead and give him the opportunity to interact with you. I had a question that was asked of me relative to the video recordings of meetings. So these city council meetings are being recorded, and they are available based on the timelines that I have previously communicated. I have had conversations with members of planning and zoning. And at this point, they did not have a desire to record the planning and zoning meetings as well. I believe there was one in particular that was a topic that they wanted to make sure that they memorialize, not only with the voice recording, which we have for all of our meetings as well, but also the video recording. So at this particular point in time, we are not doing any video recording for the planning and zoning meetings. If that should change in the future, we have the ability to be able to do that. But right now, that's how it's been set up. Just want to let everybody know. So this weekend, if you were all in town, you saw all the school buses. There was a lot of traffic. There was a big wrestling match that happened at school. I also received information that on February 22nd, there will be a regional wrestling match. So that's going to bring a lot of traffic in as well, along with 20 or so buses. I know that they were kind of parked all over the place, so I am going to have a conversation with Blake. I just think it's some... In some respects, we just don't have any room for these guys to be able to navigate. But we will have that conversation. Just be on the lookout that we're going to be experiencing a spike in people. The last thing that I wanted to talk to everybody about is, on May 1st, we're planning on having a sidewalk ribbon cutting. So by that time, we should be further along with the sidewalk in addition to kickoff for the 2020 tourism season for the businesses. So I don't have a lot of detailed information on that, but I just wanted to put it out there that it will be done. There'll be a celebration. I'm trying to see if we can get the governor here to celebrate the sidewalk accomplishment. So I don't know how successful I'll be with that, but we've got the date on the table. That is also the 10th anniversary of the South Dakota Railway Museum. So we're going to work in conjunction and partner with him and make sure that we work it cohesive so folks maybe have a lot of things to do that day and we don't step on each other's toes. So that's what I had from that perspective. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the next on the list, which is Stacia.
Before you do that, do you take questions on your report?
No. The change that was asked by Mr. Jarvis is that this is a report-out session, so...
Okay. The first thing I've received is from the Boys and Girls Club. They have corporate tables available for their annual event on March 28th. So that will be coming forward for you guys to decide whether or not you want to purchase an actual table for that. Next is our annual district meeting. It is in New Underwood this year. It will be held April 1st. And I need to know if you would like to attend by March 18th. It starts... The social starts at 6 o'clock. Dinner is at 6:30, and then the program is at 7:00. So if anyone would like to go, just let me know. And...
Where's it at this year?
New Underwood.
New Underwood.
The last thing is, too, you will notice in the paper, I have put the notice of vacancies for the election that will be coming up in June. We have the mayor's race. We have an alderman, Ward 1, for a two-year term, and an alderman for Ward 1 for a one-year term. And then alderman for Ward 2 for a two-year term. The petitions will be available on March 1st. They can be either downloaded online or here picked up at the office. And they will be due back into the office by March 31st at 5:00. I will also have a packet ready to go of how to take a petition out and how to get it signed and all of that for you available. Also petitions that will be here. The number of signatures for us will be... The mayor will be... His 31 signatures. Ward 1 is 17. And Ward 2 is 14. You are able to take out as many petitions as you want, but you may only return one petition. So you need to decide what you would like to... And that's all I have.
Thank you, Stacia. And Brett?
Main Street Sidewalk Project. Just following up on the railing discussion, I have received an email, which I responded to, about the distance that you have to walk to get around the new railing to get up. And I shared with that person, they were from, I believe, Iowa. And they come here and visit on a regular basis. They said, "We love the sidewalk. We don't like the big walk that we have to take to get around." So I explained the requirement of the state that we originally intended to design it with these cutouts that we could have one transition step up. And so it is what it is after a lot of discussion and design and feedback with the state. But they really like the sidewalk. So the other part that I'm getting questions on is, what about, like, the railing? It has kind of those two crossbars at the top and then the support poles. Will that look the same all throughout the project? And the answer is no. As we get further to the middle of the block, where the elevation between the lower sidewalk and the upper sidewalk gets greater and greater and greater with that hump, we're going to have to put in a crossbar four inches from the sidewalk surface. And that's a protection for, like, wheelchairs and whatnot so they don't go off underneath the railing. I don't see anywhere in the plans, and I don't remember any plans where there's vertical slats for the railing in there. So again, that was all by design to try to minimize the look of the railing so that the focus isn't the railing, it's buildings. So if anybody has any questions from the public, I'm happy to answer those during business hours or by email. Sidewalk project, again, is going to ramp up in March. One of the challenges that I need to meet with Travis and the existing Public Works staff is we're scheduled to replace some more curb stops and water supplies for that next block of desperadoes down to the diner. And the way that our system has been designed and built and constructed and operated over the years, there's going to be somewhat of a challenge to shutting water off so that we can get to those curb stops and swap out the valve. And so we need to work together to figure out what the best option is to make that happen. My concern is that in that area, I don't want to shut off... You know, we had that one day where we temporarily shut off the whole eastern side of town, and then we did the bypass solution. I think there's an opportunity for us to do another bypass solution down by the school, the middle school. But I need to research that a little bit more. My concern, worst-case scenario, is that if there is no way to bypass that we're going to have to do those valve replacements in the middle of the night, and hopefully, nobody's awake. And obviously, we can't do that during school time because they need water. And there's a school requirement that says if they're out of water for so many minutes, that they got to send kids home. So we're going to work with the school, get the plan in place. You know, March is coming up a lot quicker than anybody thinks or believes because January flew by. So we've got more coordination. Just because we've contracted with somebody to build the sidewalk doesn't mean that our obligation to support that construction has gone away. A lot of what we did on the current block is a lot of support with valves, traffic control questions, and drainage questions off of buildings in order to make it work to what we've got so far. So even though it's kind of a dormant topic for now, it's really not. There's stuff being discussed all the time. Business Improvement Project. At your last meeting, you approved the bid letting process for half of bid project number one, and that's the alleyway. The first notification went out in the prevailing. The second notification's going to go out this Wednesday for the bidding process. Again, we still have a pre-bid meeting on the 18th down at Long Branch Engineering in Rapid City. And I believe that's 2:00. And then the following week, bid letting is closed, and we open up the sealed bids on the 24th here at City Hall at 3:00 p.m. So we'll know what those bids come in at. That following Thursday, I guess the next week Thursday, I've scheduled another bid board meeting. That would be March 5th so that we can discuss those cost structures associated to the bid. And then the bid board can make their recommendations to you about what they would like to proceed with the project. It's going to be bid in four different elements. So you can take just one element. You can take three of the four elements. You can take two of the four elements. You'll have some ability to kind of à la carte, where you can do all four of them. So bid board, and you'll have the recommendation and thoughts of the bid board when you're making your decision. And I believe that's on the 9th that we're going to ask you to award that information. And of course, you'll have that information over the weekend to look at and whatnot. Also, on that March 5th bid board meeting, the intent is to have the restroom and senior addition final set of plans that are ready for P&amp;Z to bless for recommendation to send to you guys for bid letting. I'm going to go through this email. I'm not going to go verbatim, but the general gist of it. We received an email from the architect. They've been waiting for its skyline mechanical engineer drawings. So they received 95% of the drawings, and they've talked to the supervisor of that company. And they have the expectation that the specs should be 100% by February 21st. And so that falls in line with the March 5th meeting of the bid board. If we can get the drawings to the architect by the 21st, he can put the final touches on it, get us that, and then get direction from the bid board on March 5th. There's also some questions on here as it pertains to the senior center and what work that they are doing associated to the kitchen. You know, we just had a bid board meeting last Thursday. The discussion was that senior center is doing all of the... They're purchasing all of the equipment, the oven, the stove. They're doing all of the installation, the cabinetry. So the only thing that they need is they need the floor to be done, and they need power and water brought to the locations that they've requested. So the senior center is taking on pretty much that whole kitchen. Bid board had... The question from the bid board was, "Can we set a reasonable who's doing what line in the sand, so to speak?" And that seems pretty clear, that they're going to do everything except for the flooring and getting the utilities to the locations that are required. So that's a significant addition to that structure. We're probably going to bid that project for probably three weeks. We don't have the date set yet of the bid letting notifications or the pre-bid meeting or the final bid things. But the expectation is that we'll bid it as quickly as we can. Construction can occur during this summer. The only time that they probably can't construct is during the rally. And the expectation so far is that that addition in the public restrooms would be completed by the end of this year. And so we need to put that into the bid document, and that might change as we move forward. I think there's some belief that that project can be completed earlier than the end of this year. So we'll just... We'll see where that falls. And that's about it. If anybody would like to see a copy of that email, I'm happy to share that with you. There's some other stuff about costs associated to HVAC systems and whatnot. It's essentially things that we need that weren't discussed a month ago that need to be discussed now. So that is the bid board project. Water reservoir project, to address a question that was asked earlier, because I know this is just for a report. The current loan is set up at a 3%, and I believe it's for 30 years. I will go through the file, because I don't know that off the top of my head, but that's what I remember. I'll go through that file, the financial file. I'll go through that file, the financial file, I'll email out everybody that information. I'm still working with Rural Water, and one of the questions is, is that is there maybe a better deal now than there was when we first applied for the money, that there's an opportunity to make that interest rate, excuse me, lower? And then the other question that's still out there is the construction phasing of it. I followed up with them. The train just published their official schedule for this coming season. It wasn't up. I think last week it wasn't up yet. Obviously, I had a conversation with Meg about a year, not a year ago, a month ago, to get the general parameters of what the train would be doing. Now we have that final schedule in place. I've already sent that link to Rural Development, because that ties into the construction question. The question that I'm going to be pushing primarily is the building of the cross, crossing of there. I'd like to still get that done in April and actually take that out of the project so that we can move on it quicker and that it's not bundled with the rest of it, because we can do that without going out to bid, because the cost is minimal, and then let the rest of it follow the process of Rural Development. But again, we have to work on their schedule, because they have the authority to grant approvals along the way. The, the last one is the Major Lake Bridge Project. I have the exhibits, I think I told you at the last meeting, we have to amend our special use permit with the Forest Service. I have the exhibit documents done, those are already completed. I'm putting the final touches on the application to amend, and then the person, permanent application. I'll have those done by Wednesday this week and get those submitted into the state so that they can formally approve the easement paperwork that we've already verbally discussed with them. Some of the questions that have existed with the state and the Forest Service have been addressed, and there's still just a few more fine tuning to get everybody on the same page. So we're working on that and hope to have a clear path by the end of this week. And just, I want to follow up on, on the Public Works Report just slightly. You know, there was a comment made about, we're snow removal on a, on a, on a Sunday, Monday, that hasn't been getting done. One of the reasons for that is that we're short staffed. We're still looking for another maintenance worker. And so there are things that happen, you know, we had a water leak on Allen Gulch that needed to get taken care of. Snow removal is obviously a priority in town. So there's other operational things that have hiccups, that have repercussions through the rest of what we do. But I know the guys are working hard. Travis is fitting in nicely, trying to do what he can to keep things bubbling and going for the city. So there is a lot of things going on, even in the dead of winter, as it relates to Public Works, with trying to make things work, and, you know, we still supply water to the community. So that's it.
All right.
Can I ask you a question?
This is report-out time, so if you have any questions, you can speak with Brett directly, or you can, we can always put it on the agenda. So if you want to have a deeper discussion, you can do it later. But you can shoot Brett an email, and if it's a question that will benefit everybody, he will use it in his next report-out. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?